Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple: to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
By the chair, if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting, the placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. We will move on to proclamations, and I'm going to ask Mr. Reed to read the first proclamation.
I'd be happy to. Whereas the Falmouth Genealogical Society's mission is to inspire and engage individuals to explore their family history while promoting the importance of genealogy, history, and storytelling; whereas Falmouth Genealogical Society provides information and interactive programs for members, prospective members, and the community at large to engage and instruct in best practices for genealogical research and documentation; whereas the Falmouth community benefits both educationally and socially from the society's collaborations with the Falmouth Public Library, the Falmouth Senior Center, the Falmouth Veterans Services Office, and the Falmouth Historical Society; and whereas the Falmouth community benefits further from the society's advocacy of the various town cemeteries, including the placement of global positioning tags on all 17,000 gravestones, as well as honoring town veterans' gravesites with markers and flags where appropriate. Now, therefore, we, Robert P. Mescalley, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson, as select board members of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 12th, 2025, as Falmouth Genealogical Society Day. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 25th day of August, 2025.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Genealogical Society?
Yes, we are.
Would you care to step up to the podium and just say a couple of words?
Sure.
I'm Ralph Wadley. I am the clerk of the Genealogical Society, formerly the president, and I've done a lot of work in the cemetery, and I want to appreciate, thank, give you my appreciation for this proclamation. We're happy to be serving Falmouth and serving the community and helping out, so...
And you have a big anniversary, which is why I'm proclaiming it.
Yes, for 40 years and going strong.
All right.
Do you mind if we take a picture?
That'd be great.
No, please do.
I'll just come over and take a picture.
Can't you all come up and have Peter take you?
Yeah, there we go.
He's really good at it.
No pressure.
All right.
We're getting it. All right. Doug's hiding.
I got the seal, I got the flags, I got everyone ready. One, two, here we go.
Great.
Peter also served as a DJ.
Sir, sir, we're going to take that and we're going to process it and we'll get it out to you.
They're going to get it quite good.
Yeah, not so fast.
They want to make it official.
All right. So I'm going to take the second proclamation. Whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join us in helping to de-stigmatize mental health and take proactive action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of mental health and suicide prevention resources in our communities and help connect individuals with the appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas, with an average of 132 suicide deaths daily and each one directly impacting 125 additional people, including friends, service members, families, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a significant number of individuals have been impacted by suicide. And whereas Barnstable County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.4 per 100,000 versus the state of Massachusetts' suicide rate of 9.5 per 100,000, we recognize the need to create hope through action by changing the narrative locally. And whereas, our local Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action through trainings, forums, and events in our region. And whereas, the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts publicly places its full support behind the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition and those who work in the field of suicide prevention and research, mental health, education, and law enforcement on a daily basis. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Robert P. Mescalley, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2025, as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Town of Falmouth. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 25th day of August, 2025. Is there anyone here from the Coalition this evening? Okay, well, we will process this and get to, get to the appropriate person. Thank you.
You need to vote that?
I'm sorry?
You need to vote that?
No, I don't. Okay, recognition, any recognition here this evening? We recognize that our member, Mr. Richardson, is back from a good sojourn. Welcome back.
Thank you.
We also recognize that Vice Chair Goldstone is traveling, getting her, her son squared away at university in the Netherlands, so...
If I could, just a brief recognition for the Emerald House Community Garden Group. They invited myself and Mr. McConerty to come and enjoy their harvest from their garden, and what a great little social event it is, you know, they, they're getting pretty organized. They sponsored a road race team and a Falmouth Walk, and they work on the, you know, that fall marathon.
The Cape Cod Marathon.
So they're raising funds through those activities and it supplements their work in the garden, and it's just great to see how these, these things are pulling communities together.
And the Falmouth Patch, you know, the Falmouth Farming. Yeah, they're doing a great job, too.
They sure do have similar type of events. Very nice.
Anyone else? No? I will make an announcement that tomorrow, August 26th, is Women's Equality Day, which represents the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment, which, as we all know, granted women the right to vote. Any other announcements? Mr. Brown, I think you have one at least.
I would like to announce that this weekend is a Bands for Badgers concert. It's a great event that raises funds for if first responders or military personnel have some sort of emergency in their lives, they can turn it to the Bands of Badgers group, and they may get some assistance from them. So it's a fun day. It starts at 2 o'clock on Saturday out at the Fairgrounds, goes till 10 o'clock at night. You don't have to stay for the whole thing, but come and go as you please. It's really fun. I'll be there.
Mr. Richardson, I believe that you just mentioned it briefly, and I believe it was mentioned in the last meeting, but there's the ribbon cutting and opening of the Falmouth Patch, is a new area they rolled to purchase, six acres, they're going to have food trucks and open garden. That's this Saturday, August 30th, from 11 to 4:00. The processions are around 11:30, and I look forward to going on that one.
We can catch that and still go to the show?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, anything else?
I would just say that it's interesting that you mentioned women's equality. I remember that being a single kid with a single mom in the 60s, you know, it was a real struggle to get credit, and my mom had to save up and pay cash for her car when our car was no longer working, and she was, I remember her being mad about it, and I was a little kid then.
A little older than you are, but had the same situation, so, yep. All right, we're going to go into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in the discussion of the topic. Is there anyone here to speak to public comment? I believe there is. Please step up, introduce yourself. This gentleman has asked for our indulgence. His public comment is about 2 minutes and 45 seconds, so I've told him that that would be okay, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Falmouth Select Board. My name is Brendan Edsel, and I am representing Massachusetts for Fair Elections. We are a bipartisan organization committed to safeguarding the integrity of our election process, which remains a fundamental cornerstone of our republic, a republic to which each town council pledges allegiance at the outset of every meeting. I am concerned that for many, this pledge has unfortunately become more of a procedural formality rather than an earnest affirmation of our collective responsibilities to our communities and nation. While we share the same goals with the National Unite for Freedom Voter Validity Initiative, the sole focus of Mass for Fair Elections is ensuring that elections within our state are conducted in a lawful, transparent manner. Although numerous groups assert bipartisan motives within today's political landscape, few issues are as essential and ultimately unifying as ensuring honest elections. For decades, voices from all sides have questioned the legitimacy of election outcomes using terms such as rigged, stolen, or fraudulent. This rhetoric has deepened partisan divides, resulting in a growing number of citizens prioritizing political narratives over objective truth. In his 1796 farewell address, George Washington warned against excessive partisanship, stating, "The spirit of party," quote, "the spirit of party serves always to distract the public councils and enfeeble the public administration. It agitates the community with ill-founded jealousies and false alarms, kindles the animosity of one party against another, foments occasional riot and insurrection," end quote. This observation remains relevant today. Nevertheless, it is encouraging that we continue to engage in civil discourse at our local meetings, voicing concerns and treating one another with respect. This demonstrates that by focusing less on partisan interests and more on collective purpose, we can make significant progress for our communities. To that end, Massachusetts for Fair Elections will soon be conducting a signature drive to support election validity through practical measures, including voter identification, to reduce potential fraud or the appearance of fraud, measures that ensure valid elections will reduce propensity on both sides to question the legitimacy of election outcomes, which often lead to unwarranted hostility toward elected officials. This environment of distrust hinders effective governance and undermines community cohesion. As we begin each meeting with a pledge of allegiance and at times a moment of silence, let us reflect sincerely on their significance and rededicate ourselves to collaborative service. Often when we set aside distractions, we find the answers within ourselves and each other. Our website is massforfaireelections.org. That's M-A, the number four, fairelections.org. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Licenses. Consider a vote to approve an application from Joe Q. Veteran Coffee Break for a special one-day wine and more liquor license, Cape Cod Bocce Tournament, Falmouth Academy, 7 High Field Drive, Falmouth, Saturday, 9/20/25, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Number two, consider a vote to authorize the town manager to execute a boat dock license with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Slip D, 12180 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth. Administrative orders. Consider a vote to approve the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England Inc. for permission to install one new J.O. pole to be labeled number 1265/14, and Guy Anchor on town property at 87 Acapescot Road. The pole location is necessary to provide service to 87 Acapescot Road. Consider a vote to withdraw our $500 from the Beach donations account, 28-632-5655-4830, for the Dr. David Garber Dare to be Great Award given to Jack Wagner, Head Guard of Falmouth Heights Beach during the 2025 annual banquet. Consider a vote to approve an extension to the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station intermunicipal agreement, and that's going to be held. Number four, consider a vote to amend the Select Board meeting calendar. Number five, consider a vote to appoint John Dillon as the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center SEVOC representative to the Veterans Council Committee. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda except for number four on administrative orders?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Mr. Renshaw on number three.
Just a point of clarification, you said we were holding number four, I think you meant to say holding number three.
I'm sorry, yes, holding number three. Consider a vote to approve the extension to the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station intermunicipal agreement.
Do you need a, Mr. Chairman, do you need another motion, or you think that's fine, as is?
Consensus of the board?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all may know, our Department of Public Works Director, Peter McConerty, has served his role on the Board of Managers for the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station for about three or four years. I've asked Mr. McConerty to speak to this item tonight and answer any questions the board might have.
Okay, thank you. McConerty.
So a little bit of history about the, the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, the four towns of Mashpee, Sandwich, Falmouth, and Bourne entered into an agreement in 1988 when the facility was built, and the, the Town of Falmouth has always been the lead town for that operation up until 2015. The Town of Falmouth operated that facility with employee, our employees, and 2015, we stopped that operation, and 2017, there was a, a contract to have, a contract to run the operation of that facility. In 2018, a, a new IMA was created and voted upon, and 2022, the Town of Bourne withdrew from the, the four-town collaborative, so it became just Mashpee, Sandwich, and Falmouth. And here we are today to extend the contract. It ends on June 30, 2026. Another part of this is to renew, put out an RFP, RFQ for the operations of the facility. Right now, we can't put out an RFQ or RFP for the operations of the facility until the IMA gets resolved, because that ends on June 30, 2026. A new contract would go several years.
Just for the benefit of the audience, the difference between RFP, RFQ, you want to just...
So a request, there's a request for proposals, is for the RFP, and a request for qualifications for a, for an RFQ. There's, there's some subtle differences between them, but they could be advantageous to the four towns with, with either way we go.
Thank you.
So, so we're here tonight to see if we can extend the contract for, it started in 2018, that would, in 2025 would be year seven. We have a limit to go to 25 years. We would like to extend it to another 17 years, to be June 30, 2043. Under the last meeting in July 14 of 2025, the three towns under the Board of Managers voted to bring, bring this to each of their select boards for an extension. So Falmouth is now Town of Sandwich, and the Town of Bourne will be forthcoming to extend.
So we would be voting to extend it, and assuming the other two towns vote to extend it similarly, then it'll be in place?
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
Do you have any inclination, so is, is the Town of Bourne, just they're done with this, or do we know if they're any interest in rejoining the agreement?
Yeah, no, the Town of Bourne has requested to opt out.
They're still opting out?
They opt out. As everyone knows, Town of Bourne operates the, the intermunicipal operations, the ICW and Bourne, so they already have their operations in full gear up there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is there any concern about an email that we received about not having minutes posted of the meeting or anything?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, and slightly more, Member Brown, thank you for bringing that up. So we did have a conversation, Peter and I, earlier today, and after some research, I can report that there was a, the, the Falmouth agenda has always been posted here at Town Hall in the bulletin and the glass in the hallway. However, that's not sufficient, so going forward, we'll make sure, in addition to posting it in the hallway, through the town clerk's office, we'll post it on the website as well, online. So that was, we're going to own that, it was a miss. Going forward, we'll make sure that we have it posted on the website as well. And I understand the other two towns, at least Sandwich, had the upcoming meeting, this afternoon's meeting posted on their website.
Correct.
So that'll be a practice that we follow going forward.
Will that impede our vote tonight, anyway?
I don't think it, I don't think it should, yeah. Yeah, and we appreciate the email that pointed that out, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to vote to approve the extension of the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station intermunicipal agreement, IMA?
I would move approval of extending the agreement.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to our public hearing, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to read the notice.
So this notice was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on Friday, August 15, 2025. Liquor License Hearing Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that Green Pond Yacht Club LLC has applied for a change of ownership interest, change of officers, directors, LLC, and change of manager of its all alcohol beverage club license located at 366 Menont Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, August 25, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov, per order of the Select Board, Licensing Board, Robert P. Mescalley, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack Peter Richardson.
Thank you. Just a clarification, the public hearing is only going to be dealing with the issue for a change of ownership interest of its all alcohol beverage club license. We'll, we'll discuss the others after the close of the public, public hearing. So please introduce yourself.
Sure, thank you. For the record, my name is Matt Terry, T as in Tom, E-R-R-Y, from the law firm of Amen Klauer here in Falmouth. I'm here this evening representing Kanusha Seta, who is the applicant, and looking to receive the Select Board's approval for this change of ownership. He is in the process of taking over operations of the Green Pond Yacht Club from Kevin Harrington, and so as part of that transition process, we're before you for an approval of the change of ownership, and as the Chair had mentioned, also for a change of manager of the liquor license, and change of manager of the limited liability company that operates the, the business on site.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Oh, I have to ask, have you managed a operation like this in the past, sir?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Curious if you've managed any kind of operation similar to this in the past?
Not similar to this. I've been doing, I've been managing business for the last 40 years, and, you know, I've had multi-locations in distribution, and, you know, I've had like 300 employees at some point, and, you know, I sold out, semi-retired, and then I got back to this one, then I decided to, retirement wasn't for me, but, you know, so I've managed business for 40 years.
I see, but so this will be your first experience with the liquor service business?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's, I just wanted to point out, too, for the record, that the current owner, Kevin Harrington, is going to be staying on in a transitional role to help make that transition as smooth as possible and give the applicant the benefit of his experience having managed the, the food and beverage operations at the yacht club, and all of the employees are going to remain in places while there isn't a turnover with employees either.
Okay, good.
Well, you know, the yacht club is a fixture in the community. Do you intend to make any changes with respect to the operation, the membership, anything?
I mean, the, the, the membership, the bylaws are going to stay the same. Obviously, we're going to make improvement, mostly cosmetic improvement, technology improvement, which, you know, that is on the plan to be, to be done. The principle of the yacht club is not going to change, it's going to stay the same, it's going to stay as a private club, and, you know, we just want to make improvement so the members be, you know, more satisfied, and, you know, we try to acquire, you know, new members as, as we go on. That's basically the plan.
Mr. Renshaw, did you have anything to add? I neglected to ask you if you had an introduction.
Well, as indicated, as indicated in your packet, police and the Health Department have reviewed the application, have no objections.
Okay.
Just one more.
Yes, sure.
Just to volunteer a, a bit of information, I'm not sure if you're aware, I don't even know honestly if you have an entertainment license, but in the future, should you decide to have entertainment, just be aware that we do have entertainment regulations, so if you have that or don't have it, just become familiar with that, please.
Sure.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, any more, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a, making a motion.
Do you want to go to the audience first?
Oh, good call.
Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Okay, well, thank you. Please step up.
Go up there?
Yes, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Rose, and I've lived here a long time, so I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
It is a spectacular location, and I'm wondering, as you set out on this new adventure in boating and entertainment, do you have plans to expand here, the piers, or the buildings, the services? Could you give us a walk through what you think is going to happen and it's going to look like in two years? Thank you.
First of all, I'm not the owner of the building. The building is sold to a different company, and I'm a tenant, so I don't have any plan on expanding your footprint. I can't even do that, you know, so I'm just part of the business which is operating the yacht club, which is a part of the Green Pond Yacht Club. That's all, that's basically my, as far as my involvement goes. In regard to the boating and the marina, that it has nothing to do with what, what I'm , you know, acquiring, so I can't really talk about that.
Understood.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? No? Okay, well, now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Any discussion aboard the, among the members?
I see no problem with the application. No mention of any concern, or, I would move approval.
Is that a motion? There's a motion by Mr. Brown?
Second.
Second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So we will now consider a vote to approve the application for a change of LLC manager. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Terry?
Ah, no, thank you.
Okay. I think we'll do one and then the other, right? Yep, so, anyone making a, a motion to approve the application for a change of LLC manager? Just, as just a change in the limited liability company that, that has been formed?
Do we have to open a separate public hearing?
It's not a public hearing. It's just a vote, just a straight vote.
Motion to approve the application and change of a LLC manager for the club.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the application for a change of LLC manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will then move to... Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the application for a change of LLC manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will then move to change of manager of the club. Again, Mr. Terry, anything to add to that?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay.
And who will be the manager, I'm sorry, I didn't read that carefully.
Mr. Yasen Seta. Yeah.
So are you tip certified now, then? That's in here, okay. Sorry, I didn't pay more attention to that.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve the change of manager.
Okay, motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Okay, we are almost right on schedule. And we are now gonna move to Mr. Renshaw to present, discuss, and consider a vote to accept the FY26 capital plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, members of the audience here and at home, watching from home. Who's, by show of hands, whose eyes are hurting from our reading the small font?
Pretty small stuff there.
Mine, too.
Should I go out and get my glasses, am I gonna be using this one?
So, for the third time in a little over two years as your town manager, I'm really proud to have the opportunity to present tonight an overview of the FY26 proposed capital spending plan, as well as the 10-year capital improvement plan. As you've heard me say before, the preparation of a plan of this scope is a long process, one that is, that this year began with my distribution back in April, April 25th, of my budget instructions to the departments, just a couple of weeks after April Town Meeting, so that's how long this process has been, has been going. The departments were then required to submit their full requests no later than July 14th. This year, to the credit of our still relatively new finance director, we inserted a new step in the process. Back on July 31st, Laura, Laura Sidra, the finance director, organized a meeting with all of the departments in this room, which gave us an opportunity as a collective group to look kind of holistically and comprehensively at the entire 10-year plan. So everybody at the department level got a better, deeper understanding of exactly what the needs were for a 10-year period. And I wanna thank Laura for that, it was a great suggestion, and everybody walked out, it was kind of an eye-opening experience for a lot of folks in the, in the room. The development of a 10-year capital improvement plan is a critically important process. As a well-crafted plan, really reflects, truly reflects the strategic vision of the governing body. As I did, beginning with my first capital plan development for FY24, fiscal year 24, I asked each department to tie every capital request to one or more of the Select Board's seven strategic priorities identified in the strategic plan. We thought, again, that nexus and connection was important when we go through a capital planning process. Following this evening's overview, overview presentation, I'm asking the Select Board consider a vote to accept, with amendments or without, the FY26 proposed capital budget, and submit it to the Finance Committee, who will then be conducting, as you all know, an in-depth review of each element, at the department level, of each element of the plan. So with that, thank you for indulging me there, we'll go ahead and get into the meat of the presentation. As with any well-crafted plan, our proposed capital spending plan begins with a solid foundation based upon well-established, time-tested guiding principles and strategic priorities. These priorities are taken directly from the town's fiscal policy, most recently updated by the Select Board back on August 11th, so just a couple of weeks ago. I'm gonna just briefly talk about the five kind of cornerstones or elements, fun, guiding principles and priorities. Of paramount importance, obviously, is to ensure that we address imminent threats to the health, welfare, and safety of citizens, employees, and our property assets throughout the community. Preserving existing operational levels, obviously meeting any legal requirements of federal or state agencies. The improvement of infrastructure to include the physical condition and protection of our assets, and making sure that they operate in an efficient, effective manner. And lastly, serving to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of how we deliver those services to the community. So this 10-year capital improvement plan, which you have in front of you at your desk, truly is a comprehensive capital improvement plan. The FY26 total of $29.8 million represents a significant portion of the 803,563,000 total 10-year capital plan spending proposal that you have in front of you. As a reference point, I think, I'd like to provide some references to the Select Board, as a reference point, FY25, last year's voted capital spending plan, was about 19 and a half million dollars. I'm gonna illustrate in the later sections of the presentation what elements or what projects make up the significant increase in spending for this proposed FY26. Importantly, the plan includes all proposed capital spending from all funding sources, including grants, community preservation, Community Preservation Act, alternative funding sources, and borrowing this year. As I previously mentioned, this year, as in the past two years, the strategic plan also includes those ties to the Select Board Strategic Planning Document. As you all likely know, the largest source of annual capital funding is typically free cash, and the fiscal year 26 capital budget is clearly no exception, as it proposes, as it stands right now tonight, to use about $15.9 million in free cash. Free cash certification is expected this year to be around $20 million, we won't know that total until sometime in early October. Again, as a reference point, last year's certified free cash was about $22.9 million. Clearly, the goal is to reappropriate, when possible, to minimize the use of free cash by, by reappropriating balances from prior capital appropriations. Again, as a point of reference, last year's capital plan, the FY25 plan, relied on reappropriation in the amount of about $490,000. This year, we're looking at about $1.67, $1.7 million in reappro, reappropriation, transfer. Grants, special revenues, and other funding sources, maximizing the use of these non-free cash funding sources, continues to be our emphasis and priority, and again, making sure that we address priorities and maximize the reserves wherever possible. In this FY26 budget, proposed budget, we also propose a temporary short-term borrowing of about $4.7 million for the police station design, which will get us through bidding documents, so I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment as well. The slide basically gives a high-level overview of FY26 budget's funding sources. As I mentioned before, and you're gonna get tired of me saying this, free cash represents the most significant element of our spending this year. At about $15.9 million, we're proposing utilizing $2.87 million in Community Preservation Act funding. This is primarily gonna be utilized for the Trotting Park soccer field, a little over $2 million, $2,070,000. As a reference point, again, in FY25, the capital budget relied on about $14 million in free cash. This year, we're relying on about $15.9 million. Last year's capital spend was about $19.4 million. Grants, the $50,000 that's listed here and in your packets this evening is a little bit misleading. So this only shows, my understanding, after talking to the Assistant Town Manager, it only shows those projects for which we're seeking appropriation in November, so it doesn't give you the total picture. The departments are very astute in identifying grant sources where possible. MES is a good example of that, through the, I was forgetting the name of the grant opportunity.
Seaport is one, and Coastal Zone Management is the other.
That's right, Seaport grants, MES has applied successfully this past year for about $330,000, and they have another application cycle coming up. So those amounts aren't included in this proposal because they're not part of the November appropriations.
Question, if I may, are these both state grants?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Transfer some existing articles, again, I talked about the reappropriation of funding from prior capital appropriations, the $1.679 million that we're proposing to reappropriate from, from past appropriations. And again, this represents a significant increase from last year's appropriation of, of transfer. Last year, we utilized about $490,000. Borrowing, I mentioned, designing, design and engineering for the new police facility, we're proposing a borrow of about $4.7 million, and I'll talk about that in this next slide. So the police station design, currently, as you all probably know, the Police Facility Advisory Committee, which Peter sits on, has been working in earnest for the past several months, they're doing a great job, I've attended a couple of meetings myself. Right now, the design and engineering of the facility is in concept stage, so the numbers that I'm gonna be talking about, don't hold me to them, because they, they could change. But in regards, in, in order to get us through, you know, final design and through the bidding document stage, we're gonna request borrowing of about $4.7 million, $5.4, $4.7 million in borrow, about $700,000 in cash from previous appropriations. So the total amount is about $5.4 million. Important, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if, as far as the design, has the location been determined?
So, so it's still, it hasn't been released. The, the, as I mentioned, the facility, Police Facility Advisory Committee, at their last meeting, reviewed all three sites that were under consideration, I think they're very close to making a final determination, hasn't been officially announced yet.
Is the topography similar on the three sites, so that the design would hold on either site?
Topo is similar on all three sites, I think the sites, there's one site that, that the topography is probably more ideal than the other two, but they're, they're all similar in topography.
Alright, thank you.
So just to clarify, it's actually 5.2, but you would be borrowing 4.7?
Uh, 5.4 million, 5.4 million, but we'd be borrowing a short-term borrow of about 4.7.
And, and short-term being, being, you know, what would you be looking at, when you say short-term?
Yeah, so I believe what the finance director is planning is a short-term borrowing of like two years, and then folding that short-term borrowing into a longer note.
Yeah.
Right, which might go as long as 20 years.
Important takeaway from this slide, and it's listed there as the note, we're anticipating construction costs, again, we're, the police facility group, meeting with the OPM and the architect, engineer of record, are finalizing numbers, but we're still at concept stage. We're anticipating this cost in FY27, and it's proposed, being proposed, as we stand here tonight, to be exemplified in terms of borrowing. The important takeaway from the slide is that this project, this construction project, the cost will impact real estate taxes if the project is funded when approved by Town Meeting. Right now, we're looking, as indicated in your packet, over $55 million. And again, don't hold me to that number, still being kind of looked at and analyzed and examined by the Police Facility Advisory Committee and the OPM and Architect, but it will result in an impact to real estate property taxes.
And would be anticipate using a debt exclusion?
Yes.
Voters would approve?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any, any estimate on the impact? I know it's pretty, pretty premature perhaps, but.
Is that, do you have that number yet? You can work on that number, I asked, I, Peter and I were talking about that this afternoon, in terms of having a tentative number, we don't have that yet.
Okay.
Any other questions on that slide? So as in any, I'm sure I'm on the right side, so as in any budget year, difficult decisions have to be made with regards to what projects get recommended for funding and which don't. Important to note, in total, this year, the FY26 capital spending plan, there was about $2.4 million in department requests that were not recommended for funding, and instead were deferred. They're not removed, they're just being deferred and moved down the, down the scale of the plan, down the 10-year plan. And again, this was based upon some pretty extensive discussions with those departments that were involved. It wasn't just done on a whim, it was after some extensive discussions with the department heads and division heads. I'm gonna go through a few of these, but again, the $2.4 million, if you add up everything on that slide, it comes to $2.4 million. The bulk of it, half of it, literally, was the removal of that funding, the IA cost mitigation, removing the $1.2 million in both FY26 and 27. The reason for that, after much discussion, we currently have no, as you all know, we have no policy that's been developed and approved. In addition, we're not certain quite yet whether we can utilize these public funds in this way. So there's a lot of questions still, I think it's gonna be something that we deal with, obviously, but we're not prepared to deal with it in this CIP.
IA being innovative, all kinds of stuff.
And the mitigation meaning assisting?
Yes.
Yeah, assisting homeowners with, with the cost.
With the cost of, of those, of installing those systems, yes.
Thank you.
And again, I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but the important takeaway from this slide was, yes, there were some tough decisions that had to be made with regards to this fiscal year's spend, 20, we're over $29 million now, and this slide represents the $2.4 million of projects that didn't make the cut, and were recommended for funding.
If I could, just one more that, that I think didn't make it was the design of the outfall, could you touch on that? Is that, was that actually formally requested?
No, it's, the design of the outfall is in there, I think that was for $1.3 million.
We did not defer that.
EIR, EIR, the design and EIR.
Okay.
Right, we did not defer anything related to the outfall.
I thought I saw $700,000 that was requested, but I, maybe that wasn't.
Yeah, apologies, I don't have that sheet in front of me, but, I know for a fact, it's still, it's still in there.
Okay, thank you.
The outfall design, and I, I think it's listed as design, environmental impact report, EIR.
Thank you.
Okay, just on this slide, I'm gonna hit some of the highlights, I talked earlier about, you know, what made up the difference between last year's spend of a little over 19, and now we're at 29. So what's that $10 million delta? This'll give you a good indication. Water main replacements, if you all remember, the commitment was to do $3 million of water main replacements, based upon revenue generated through the, the rates. We're upping that this year, we're proposing to up that to $4.6 million in water line replacements because, and the water superintendent proposed this in, in discussions with the DPW Director, we thought it was a great idea. Brick Hill Road, when they're installing the sewer force main down Brick Hill, why not go ahead and install the water? It just makes more sense to do it that way. And so that takes up, that makes up the, the $1.6 million difference between last year's spend on the water line replacements and this proposed FY26 spend.
Does that have to go on the other side of the road?
Uh, yeah, it'll fit into the audience, so the, the white squad will go up, the white squad will go up the middle of the road, and water will be probably on the opposite side of the road, on the school side of the road.
Okay, thank you. So that whole road will be closed for a while?
Some detours will be in place.
Right.
John, the Trotting Park baseball fields, primarily free cash, but $3.2 million. Nobody sitting here in this room in FY24 really contemplated or anticipated the need to have to remediate the, the fields at John Neal, at Trotting Park. So $3.2 million is a pretty significant portion of that $10 million additional spend, so I just wanted to point that out to the Select Board. We did anticipate and knew the need for, the replacement of the library windows, roof and AC repairs, at $1.4 million. The $1.8 million, pretty standard amount for road maintenance, construction of sidewalks, a fire engine and ambulance. So, one, a little over $1.1 million. $556,000 of which is for the replacement at the request of fire rescue of an ambulance, that's got about 150,000 miles roughly on it, so it's getting towards the end of its life. We talked about remounts of the ambulance, we've made the decision just to go forward with the replacement. Remount is taking the, the box off the back and drop, and redoing it, retooling it, and then dropping it on a brand-new chassis and motor. That's a practice that's done in other places, but it just didn't end up resulting in significant savings, so we're just recommending a replacement. So of that $1.1 million, more than half of that is the ambulance replacement, for the ambulance and the fleet that's got the most mileage. The other, the balance, $550,000 is to replace the current engine in Station 4, which is a 1990, I always get the date wrong, 1998, engine that was purchased, used. So they're recommending a purchase of a replacement engine for that. If you recall the discussions, I think at Town Meeting last, last year, there, and, and I remember having discussions with the fire chief and, and the staff, we felt we could get another year, this is last year, out of that engine. Mechanically, it was sound. There were significant issues with the body, the floor, basically where the driver and operator sit, had some rust and rot. So it, it was time, so we're recommending $550,000 in this upcoming capital budget to replace that, that engine.
I have some questions about that, should I hold them to?
Um, if, if, well, Mr. Chair, you're, you're.
Whenever your pleasure, Mr. Renshaw.
Let's go ahead, yeah, let's go ahead, and I don't have a lot of the sheets in front of me, but go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know we were interested to, to know if we can add a bay to that station, and maybe then fit a full-size truck, I wonder if we should hold off a little bit and get a sense of whether or not that's a practical thing to expect to be able to do?
Yeah, so great point, and, and actually, I conferred with the DPW Director. DPW Engineering is kind of helping assist and leading this project, Gale Associates is our engineer consultant that's actually doing the feasibility. Station 4 expansion feasibility study, you know, we're looking at the station from a structural standpoint, whether it could withstand, whether an expansion is feasible. And basically, by expansion, I mean going out, I forget, to the, is that the east?
North.
It's a little north, thank you. Taking up, shouldn't go into too many details, going to the north with an expansion of a bay, and, and basically making that Station 4 capable of holding both an engine and an ambulance. So the ambulance, if you can visualize this, would slide into where the current engine is, and the new extension bay, if feasible, would slide into the new, new bay. is, and the new extension bay, if feasible, would slide into the new, new bay. All that being said, we're still waiting on the final report from Gale, and I just found out we're expecting that mid-week this week. So we're very close to knowing. We plugged in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, I think is the number, for some of the projected cost. I'll have a better indication next time we speak on, on the budget.
So we'll let that go for now and just figure it out later, I guess.
I think it's important that we look at it.
What impact would that have on the, on the, on the engine itself that we're...
Because I think the chief's description would be that he would have to try to find a specialty vehicle that doesn't exactly fit with our fleet, and I've talked with them about this in the past. He prefers that, I think Pierce Arrow is the, I think the preferred brand, that he wants to have a uniform fleet, and they don't make one of the size that would fit in that station. So now...
As is.
As is. So now he would be finding a real specialty vehicle to try to fit in there, so...
Yeah, I forget the dimensions of the current bay, but it is a challenge and it's restrictive, and, and it is always a preference everywhere I've ever managed to have a standardized fleet. You don't wanna have two, you know, apparatus that are different brands and models, different brands. That being said, yeah, our priority, our preferred vendor doesn't offer anything in that size, and to rebuild from start to finish, as you all know, is about a forty-six month window. So that makes that impractical. So we, that's why we're looking at a, purchasing a, a used apparatus, a used engine. We're successful doing that when we purchased this nineteen ninety-eight. We're relatively comfortable we'd be successful again. They've already started the process, I understand, looking around to see what's available.
And the final, last question on this one, it would, so a couple of years, or last year or the year before, we bought that other vehicle, I think it was maybe a two thousand six?
Right, yep.
Is that operational, that would be able to get us by for a little while?
So I'll have to, I'll have to verify, I don't wanna speak too much of this. I know that, I think it's the two thousand six that's the replacement. When, when the nineteen ninety-eight goes into the shop, this two thousand six, if I misread...
I think that sounds right.
Is the replacement. But I'll have to, I'll have to verify kind of the status of the two thousand six, because I can't say it tonight for sure.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, so wastewater outfall permitting here, it is one point three, four million dollars for the permitting, EIR, Environmental Impact Report and Conceptual Design. This one point three, four million is a proposed capital debt stabilization, is what I make that point. This is new, Morse Pond School Feasibility Study. I mentioned the July thirty-first meeting at Laura's suggestion, where all the departments got in this room, that included School Department. So Mr. Paul Dart, owner of the school, was here to talk about, you know, future plans for Morse Pond. And, and as you all know, the school is contemplating consolidation, which could in effect make Morse Pond not, not needed in the school's inventory. So what we're proposing is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash, utilizing free cash to do a feasibility study, which would basically look at the best possible use of that twenty-acre site. The building itself is a little over a hundred and three thousand square feet, so it's a significant asset. We just want to make sure that we do our due diligence and make sure that we're, we're finding the best possible use. If that's subdividing, and having multiple uses on the site, we don't know, but we think we would not be doing it justice if we didn't do a feasibility study to look at all the options and keep those options open.
Maybe they'll see, put town hall there.
Maybe.
It's too big.
Some housing, maybe.
And, and the last item, again, under these highlights, other than the borrowing that we've talked about, is Trotting Park. The master plan, we're proposing about seventy-five thousand dollars in master planning effort for Trotting Park. Pickleball design, about thirty thousand dollars to finalize, wrap up the pickleball facility complex design. And lastly, the synthetic soccer field, at about two million seventy thousand, well, not about, at two million seventy thousand, that's the construction, installation of the synthetic soccer fields. The town meeting previously approved at Trotting Park.
I had a lot of comments about that synthetic field. Is that really the, the recommended so far?
It was, town meeting voted and approved, right? Peter's, I understand.
Right, so, town meeting approved design funds for replacing one rectangular soccer field at Trotting Park with a synthetic field. So there was some debate at town meeting about the environmental implications, but it was, it was approved. And of course, it'll have to go back to town meeting again, and I'm sure that question will come up.
Continues to be a big debate.
I think it's probably more important that the baseball fields be natural, because that's the summertime and...
We're gonna talk a little bit about that, not go into a whole lot of detail, but that's, that's, that's later in, in the agenda tonight. So the next couple of slides, I wanted to, we wanted to give select board and the community, and it's all included in your ten-year plan, kind of a glimpse going forward of where we're at. As a result, if you recall, as a result of the recent Comprehensive Building Facility Needs Assessment, that study that we did, using the firm brightly, we, as a result of that effort, we've estimated now the need for about ten million dollars a year for the next five years, in terms of remediating, repairing, and again, prioritizing, using, using this new system, prioritizing those based upon life safety, structural issues, that sort of thing. So we have a better understanding of what our true capital needs are when it comes to the buildings, facilities in town. So I think that's very important. Just wanted to give you the scope of what we're looking at in terms of magnitude of dollars. Although still at the concept design stage and being evaluated, as I mentioned earlier, by the Police Facility Advisory Committee, the police construction, construction estimate is approximately fifty-five million dollars. Again, I'd ask you not to hold me to that number, because it is a moving target, as you all know, with tariffs and cost escalations, it, it's, it's been a challenge. So we're still kind of trying to sharpen pencils to the best of our ability. And in accordance with the strategic plan, we're still looking at this potential of combining stations, the, I think it was called in the McGrath Study, the Northwest Connector. That's still in the strategic plan. Again, when the select board meets again and reviews that strategic plan, I take direction from the board. So currently, that's the direction, as we're continuing to look at that, and that's why it remains in the, in the ten-year plan. The land acquisition is programmed in FY twenty-eight, so a couple of years from now, and design in FY twenty-nine. Land acquisition at about a million dollars, and construction and design at about nine hundred and fifty thousand, or, I'm sorry, design and engineering about nine hundred thousand. Aquaculture, we talked about this right when I got here, a couple of years ago, expanding the aquaculture program, and at about, at the pace of four million dollars from FY twenty-seven through FY twenty-nine. Ball kid replacements, again, these are MES projects, Marine Environmental Services projects, ball kid replacements and dredging. We're estimating, projecting, eleven, a little, a little over eleven million dollars over the next ten years. Phase two of the Marine Park improvements, about five million dollars, programmed right now in FY twenty-eight. Another cost, MES cost dredging and repairs, again, close to eleven million dollars. Laura's School Reservation, huge number, looming in FY twenty-eight, projected right now at about a hundred and fifty million dollars, that number appears in your packets. East Falmouth Roof and Windows, I can't understand, I can't, getting a better appreciation for the cost of replacing roofs and windows, four and a half million dollars in FY twenty-nine for East Falmouth School. AC projects, about twelve and a half million dollars, again, spread out over the next ten years, this is, this is just giving you kind of a conceptual idea. And although we're still currently evaluating it, school electrical needs, they're unknown, but we anticipate being significant. And looking ahead, again, continuing this trend of looking at, at projects, Monont Road and Grand Avenue, thirteen million dollars in twenty-nine. Fleet replacement needs, we're projecting over eight million dollars over the next ten years. Sometimes the fleet replacement needs, some of those can be pushed and moved, so it's a bit of a moving target, but that's what we're projecting. Police Fire Consolidated Communications Equipment, as you all know, the equipment to run modern public safety agencies are not, is not inexpensive, so we're anticipating about thirteen and a half million dollars over the next ten years. Outfall Design and Construction, eighty-seven million, I'm just going through the list real quickly. Water mains over the next ten years, we talked about the three million dollar clip, just stays on that clip at about thirty point seven million dollars over the next ten years. East Falmouth Library, six million dollars in FY twenty-seven. And lastly, but not least importantly, Surf Drive Beach Nourishment, we're looking at three million dollars in FY twenty-seven. So, this year's capital budget has been a significant challenge. I love doing the capital budgeting, because I love how it ties to strategic vision and , and planning, but this has been a challenge. As the board is fully aware, two major projects, construction of a new police station and remediation of the Trotting Park baseball fields, represents about eight point six million dollars of the ten point three million dollar increase in capital spending between last year and this year. And quite honestly, nobody really anticipa, we, we likely saw the need of having to do something to the police station, nobody anticipated the cost and what we're looking at just over the past couple of years, the increase in, in construction costs. So that's what we're dealing with right now. We, we always seek to maintain a balance, maintaining equipment and infrastructure within the limitations of our funding that's available, and, and most important, and equally importantly, the bandwidth and capacity of the staff to pull off the project successfully, because that's an important part as well. Proposals represent, these proposals that I'm presenting to you this evening represent what we consider to be the upper limit of what we can spend while maintaining, and hopefully, building our cap, our, our financial reserves. The post-capital projects represented are a tremendous amount of work for staff. That's like, that's an understatement of the evening. It's a huge amount of work that's gone into us, and I cannot thank the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, all the department heads, all the division managers, because just a tremendous amount of work, literally, since the end of April, has gone into what you have before you this evening. And lastly, again, the ask tonight, and although it's not critical, the ask tonight is that the board consider accepting and transmitting, submitting to the Finance Committee with or without amendments, the FY twenty-six proposed capital spending plan. And with that, I'll sit down and have all my notes in front of me and be able to talk to you.
Thank you, but I certainly, I'm, I'm sure we all want to compliment you on a, on a, you know, big effort. Ms. Citron, Mr. Johnson Staub, all your, all your staff, it was a very understandable presentation and what we had in our packet. I will, just, just so the members know, I did speak with the Finance Committee Chair, Keith Schwegel, this morning, and if the board chooses not to move forward tonight with a vote, that's not an impediment as far as they're concerned. It could wait until our next meeting, when, you know, Vice Chair Goldstone is here as well, but just wanted you to have that information as we go forward this evening, so...
Point of protocol question, are we just simply looking at the high-level needs and costs here, or are we diving into specifics within this? What's typically the way?
To me...
Go ahead, Doug.
I would say that, my feeling is always that we are the political aspect of it, so things like whether or not we wanna do that Northwest Fire Station, or if we wanna add to a fire station, those are the political-type comments that I think we share with the Finance Committee. As far as the details of the actual projects, I think the Finance Committee is certainly capable, and more than capable of, of doing that. I don't really nitpick the, the details, because I know that they will, I just look at the big picture and then try to give comments that hopefully will lead them and guide them in their decisions.
Great, that helps, thank you.
And in that...
Yep, Mr. Richardson.
I was gonna say, in that respect, you know, that's why I asked the questions about the fire station and the truck.
Thank you, just echoing, it was fantastic, you know, a lot of work, a lot of, I can't imagine how squinting at whatever, however long this Excel spreadsheet was. The Governor Healy had her budget signed recently, and Falmouth got over double in Chapter Ninety funding. Is that reflected in your, what your estimates were? I think it was a little over a million for road repairs, is that around what you were looking for, or are you looking to increase that?
We're backlogged, so we need it all.
What was that?
We're backlogged, so we need it all.
Peter's saying we're backlogged, so we need it all. So, so, so it's my understanding, and again, I think that would be an example of one of the state funding, that it's not a grant per se, but it's, it's not, can we appropriate that?
It is technically, we do not appropriate it, right, it's a formula grant, and, I mean, Mr. McConity is here, can certainly speak to it in greater detail, but we, you know, if we had triple the amount of state funding every year, we would easily be able to spend it and still need to supplement it with local tax dollars in order to maintain the roadways.
Thank you.
I, I always like to just send this as quickly as we get it, that staff puts so much effort into getting it ready, I'd love to have the Finance Committee have it, if we can just transmit our comments. I'm sure some of the members will watch our meeting this evening and take those comments into consideration as they deliberate. We're certainly gonna have more chances to, to comment on it later, but I never like to hold them up if they, as soon as we can get it out the door, the better.
I mean, just to clarify, I don't think we're holding anybody up, so I don't think that's the, that's the issue. Mr. Renshaw is gonna give his overview to the Finance Committee on Wednesday night, and so, you know, I, I was a little concerned with voting it tonight with Ms. Goldstone not being here, although she did make a couple of comments that I think we've responded to, but with Mr. Richardson and Mr. Reed being new to the process, my inclination was that maybe we wanted to defer it until September eighth and ask Keith if that was okay, and he said yes, but if the board feels that, you know, that, that it's prepared to, to vote it and move it, that's, that's fine, someone can make a motion, or if there's any further discussion...
I have a few more comments.
Sure, go for it.
I, I also just wanna commend the amount of spending to recreation, you know, the, build it and they'll come, you know, as, as someone who grew up not too recently, you know, I've, I referee Trotting Park every weekend, I play Falmouth Soccer Club, started at the Heights Field, you know, when I was four or five, and, you know, those fields in Trotting Park need a lot of work, so I'm glad that the money is there to do that, you know, so I, I thank you for that. I don't, and I know I've brought this up in other avenues, two points here, I think that this shows the need to increase revenues within the town, this is a very expensive capital budget, and as you mentioned, costs are only going up, and, you know, today's Monday, Wednesday, the tariff rate could be different for a different thing, so we don't know how that would affect our budget. Is there any where's, that, areas that you're looking at potentially, you know, putting you a little bit in the hot speech seat, I guess, for revenue increases? You know, I've mentioned wanting to change the tax rate on residential exemption to increase tax rate on summer residents. Is there any, any area where you think that we're, can do the, you know, least amount of, increase our revenues while still, you know, benefiting and trying to keep our taxes low as possible for the people who live here?
That's a great question, and Chairman Muscally and Select Board Member Richardson. So Peter and I have been talking a little bit, just recently over the past week about, I, I like to first look at fees, user fees, and then, so what we're looking at right now is the potential, I think it's been a couple of years since we've looked at, at ambulance EMS fees and rates, I should say, rates, I think is the more accurate term. So we're going to, working with Chief Smith, start that review process to see where we're at. You know, you don't want to leave that pack, certainly, but we want to make sure that we're, you know, not, not at the bottom of that rate structure either. So I think there's an opportunity to, to generate some additional revenue, but don't hold me to the number, but I think it was a little over a million dollars, the last rate study and change that we made with EMS ambulance rates resulted in about a million dollars, so not insignificant amount.
Could also consider the mooring fees, we're, we're half the price of Mash B E. I know one of the Waterways Committee members was doing an analysis, you have the Cape Town, and you're probably the lowest.
That's an opportunity as well.
Yes.
Another one for me, and again, I'm not sure, I know this isn't everything, but I, I don't see an allocation here, correct me if I'm wrong, for housing. Could you speak to that, and, you know, how will that align with our strategic goals for the board, and how we need to build a lot of new...
Sure.
Sure, great question. So, we, we don't really consider housing a capital project, because it's not an asset that's owned by the town, but it's, you know, it's certainly relevant to bring into the conversation. We, we do have a recurring funding source within that we appropriate, we recently made the change in the cycle in terms of when it's appropriated, appropriated now in April, and that comes from recurring lodging rooms excise tax revenue, so that's a policy the Select Board adopted, so we have a recurring funding source there, and of course, there's a request made to the Community Preservation Committee for appropriation for affordable housing from the Community Preservation Funds as well.
So the only instance it would be in here is if it was something like Co-op City in New York, where it's the city ran and owned. That would be the only example where the town would be paying for it. If we had, entirely hypothetical that thing...
We have a facility similar to it.
Yeah, correct, right, if we owned it. And, and, you know, we've got the Falmouth Housing Authority, Falmouth Housing Trust, Housing Trust, nonprofit, Falmouth Housing Corp., nonprofit, you know, we have three different entities-
Yeah.
-that own affordable housing locally, so that's-
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, you got it.
Another one might come into play is the Short Term Rental Committee had a presentation from Leslie Sandberg from Provincetown, and she was explaining how even though their town is quite a bit smaller than Falmouth, between the rooms tax and the short-term rentals and the registration fees, they've got $5 million of revenue each year, so.
They also have the residential exemption, Provincetown.
Yeah.
So, if I may, just briefly, so we, we bring in 5 million as well, but it's allocated. That's, that supports the ongoing operating budget that we have in place. There's, again, a portion of that through policy that's allocated toward housing, but the rest of it we're relying on for the operating budget.
I remember that well.
Well, good points, but I think we need to focus just on, you know, on the capital issues, so. Mr. Reed?
Being new to this, I appreciate all the work. There's a tremendous amount of manipulation onto these spreadsheets to see how they all add up, so I definitely know where, how much work you put into it. Just some high-level observations to everybody is I overall support the direction that we need to go in, and I'm comfortable with making the motion here for us to, to move on. These comments are meant more of a reflection for the strategic plan. And tying these things, I think, to your point, Mr. Renshaw, this, this list that you gave to us and that we read, it represents a bottom up, all the bottom-up needs from each and every department and individual that works here at the town. And you've done a really nice job fitting those or tying them into the strategic plan. Some of them are really obvious, and some of them were reaches. And whereas I think, you know, Jack and I newly here, we campaigned and listened a lot to strategic planning, and there are some obvious ties to that, but not necessarily anything from the strategic plan driving some of the investments. There, there are a few big numbers in there, so overall I would say that there is some alignment there. My overall recommendation is that when we go into our strategic planning process, especially for the transparency of us to the town, is to align our strategic plan with the spending plan and use the capital improvement plan as the backbone. So in each section that we have, so for instance, we noted housing, there aren't anything, you know, and to your point, justified why there wasn't anything in the capital planning budget for housing, but inside that strategic plan, kind of break it down into the day-to-day stuff that we're trying to do in addition to the capital planning, I think, just so that we can kind of get these chunks moving. And then to the previous conversations, we have measurable things that we're going after, and the budget drives everything, drives all of our capacity to do new things and keep current operations. So I just implore this group to take those next steps necessary to make sure that we're, you know, operating in unison.
You know, I just will point out that, as, as you know, the, the capital plan does tie each and every request to the strategic plan and justifies it with, with those requests, so.
So noted.
Yep.
One last question, if I could.
I'm unfamiliar, I have a question and I'd like to ask it, I'm not sure when.
Okay.
One more. Is somewhere in here the new roof for the old pump station?
No.
The old pump station?
Ten Pumping Station Road?
No.
We, so no, we did not include that, that project. We talked, we talked about parsing out another kind of feasibility study, looking at one feasibility, I think the last, last go at that, we included both 65 Pumping Station Road and 10 Pumping Station Road, both buildings. We talked briefly about trying to parse that out and opted because of, quite literally, the size of this $29 million request, did not include that issue.
But the roof's leaking, right? I think, I don't know that.
So I, I toured the building a year, over a year ago, and Peter, can you speak to 10 Pumping Station Road, Select Board Member Brown, I'm sorry, through the chair? If, do we have water intrusion into that building?
Yes, we do. So, so between, there is some damage on the roof with the roof shingles, and also vandalism up there with the windows get broken, what have you, that there is intrusion, so yeah, there is getting some water damage up there. We have been looking the last two, three years at replacing the roof and putting a new asphalt roof on there, but it wouldn't just be shingles, you'd have to trim it out, it would be gutters, it would be, there's several dormers that would need to be also included, so it's a, it's a good-sized job-
Right.
-to do that roof. It would secure it, but then we would still need to secure it from vandalism for the, for the walls and the inside.
Right, such a shame. I'd just like to think of some way we could do some kind of interim measures to at least protect it from deteriorating.
We'll take another look at it, but there's nothing in this FY26 plan that proposes spending.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, ma'am, if you want to have a question, please come up, which is not really a, you know, public meeting discussion, but I'm happy to take your question.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the discussion. I think it's really important that I'm a neighbor to Trotting Park. My name is Cynthia Rose. And why I'm here is the line item for Trotting Park is quite large. We have a super fun site at the ball field coming up. It's gorgeous. They did a knockout job. Underneath that land, we do not know what is there. Now, I have spent a lot of hours counting birds, and the planning that has been done in the past has now created a placement where birds go. The Brick Hill Village, the YMCA, the Habitat for Humanity, the Sandwich Road, the Dunkin' Donuts.
Do you have a question with respect to the capital plan, ma'am?
Yes, the question is, thank you very much, the question is, why would you even consider putting plastic on top of ground materials which are expensive, $2 million worth of expensive, in a town that's closing schools and that has an environmental backbone which has made us great and known around the world? That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
I owe you all to be people who care deeply, and I do too, and all these people do. Quirk comes from Europe, Paris, ground tires, I'm not having it.
This will be an ongoing discussion with respect to this issue.
Thank you so much. Please defer the vote until Kevin Kroger weighs in on, is this safe?
I think that was a different matter.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think this is-
This is the ball field, you're talking about the soccer field-
I'm talking about the soccer field, which I feel-
That was from last year.
That was already discussed.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's not in this budget, that's, that's a different-
I, I do know that, but we also didn't know that a dump was going to show up, okay? We've got a police station going in, we've, that is going to take out trees, lots of trees, 122 varieties of birds, rare birds, migrating birds, okay? So I'm asking you, hit the pause button on the fields. You've got a big mess up there. We've got a $55 million police station, a dog village-
We got your point, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
I hope you do something.
Okay. Mr. Reed?
I'm ready to make a motion to-
Transmit?
Transmit this, to accept this and transmit it to the finance committee.
So your, your motion is to accept the FY capital plan as presented by Mr. Renshaw?
Yes.
And there's a second? Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work on that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, good job, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to an overview of water quality monitoring program for Falmouth Bathing Beaches. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We invited the regional experts in this area, which is certainly not me. Scott McGann, our health agent, is going to talk, give a brief presentation on current efforts, monitoring efforts on the beaches, and then offer some other insights in regards to perhaps some other regions of the country and what they do.
Sure.
Scott?
Good evening. So, yeah, we do a lot of things at the Health Department, so one of the things we do is we have a Massachusetts Bathing Beach Water Quality Program, which is the state's regulation called 105 CMR 445. And what it basically does is there's three types of beaches, there's public beaches, which is the beaches that the town's responsible for, Chappaquoy, Old Silver, and so forth. There's also semi-public beaches, might be the Moors Association, Nobsker Beach, Jenkins Pond. And so we have, and then there's private, and the regulation basically is for public and semi-public beaches. And it's the responsibility of the local boards of health to regulate public and semi-public beaches under the CMR, and we have 52 sampling sites in town, both fresh and salt. So it's a pretty good number of semi-public beaches, which we do license. The beach testing itself, we test for indicator bacteria. Bacteria indicate the presence of fecal coliform. For saltwater, we use enterococci and E. coli for freshwater, and the reason being is enterococci test out better in saltwater environments. So we do that on a weekly basis. We are very lucky on the Cape that we have Barnstable County, because we have Barnstable County Health and the Environment, has their own water testing laboratory, and they also provide courier service for the water samples, which is huge. I don't know what they do off Cape, but that is definitely a heavy lift. So the beach sampler comes on Tuesdays this, this year, and they do 52 samples and they get that out to the lab, okay? So we do that. The operators of the semi-public beaches pay for their own, the town takes care of the town beaches, and the private beaches aren't tested. And they start sampling within five days, roughly the five days to a week before, and throughout the bait, the beach season. So it'll be up until about sometime in September, there'll be, early September, they'll stop testing it. So we're not testing for anything other than fecal indicators of fecal coliform bacteria. And I did some research on what, because we'll talk a little bit about the, the incident that we did a press release on, is that essentially we're doing a similar thing to what Florida, Texas, and Louisiana do when they're testing with the same indicator organism, with very close to the same water quality standards. So our water quality standards for marine is CFU to 100 milligrams, is colony forming units per 100 mL of water, and those are the standards. The geomean is relatively an average, so that basically says you can be passing at, you know, 103, but if you continue to test for 103 for several weeks, you're going to be outside your geomean. And so how this works is essentially we test, one failure, one failed test does not constitute a closure, it would be a second failed test in a row. Generally what we do is if, if it's failing, we'll know by the lab, generally knows by Wednesday, and we'll get somebody en route to test again to make sure that we aren't having a problem, and also that it wasn't a one-off thing, because things can't happen sort of one-off. You could get a failure, but the beach is relatively clean. So that's what we do on a weekly basis. It's similar to what, well, it's basically the state regulation, it's also what they're doing, from what I can tell elsewhere. So each week I'll get a result like this, whether it exceeded its geomean, whether I need to take action and close a beach, or, you know, whether any action takes. So you have the geomean, the result of each test, and the time it was taken, and that's just a snippet of the 52 that we would do on any given week. And as far as public notification, and this year, we have not had a beach closure. We've had a failed test, but the second test's been a pass. And a lot of times that's due to tides, outgoing tides behind a salt marsh may bring some more heavy rains, also can play a part in increasing the coliform levels. So after the two samples are collected on consecutive days, both exceed the single test, or you exceed your geomean, you would post the beach until it tested itself out. Some years seem to be worse than others, this year is, like I said, been a good year.
Good drought.
Well, drought, if we did have a heavy rain on a Monday night, then you would tend to wash things in, you could have more of an issue with heavy rains, a lot of things washing into the salt marsh, which then works its way out to the beach. And then you pick up a sample on an outgoing tide, you'll have a higher probability of having an issue, but we haven't had an issue this year, and that's good. And then again, it's great to have the lab, and we would post, and then what we do is, kind of cool, is each semi-public beach operator also have signs. So they get a permit from us every year, we only charge $10, because they do have to spend quite a bit of money throughout the beach season to pay for this, and they would have a sign that we would look at every year, they upload it on to permitize for our permitting, and we make sure that they have a sign that would say that the place was, the beach was closed. So we do that, and again, we haven't had any semi-publics this year either.
Keeping on the private ones?
Private ones we don't test.
But I mean, did you hear any reports, do they report to you?
They don't test. Private would be somebody who had a house on the water.
No, I meant, I-
Semi-publics?
Semi-publics.
Semi-publics are treated just like public, so if I go back up one slide, you'll see some of these Asshumet Valley property owners-
Oh, I see, they're all listed together.
They're all listed, the 52. We don't test, probably 15 or 18 maybe from our beaches and then the rest, it's all goes into one. So they're treated just like, semi-public and public beaches are treated the same.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I should have been clearer on that. And so we post the beach and would reopen it based on getting, either getting below the geomean, the average, or getting to, to testing pass. Other reasons why you would close it would, you know, perhaps a heavy rainfall if there was a reason to do that, or, you know, a release of oil, scum, hazardous materials, you know, clara, there could be other reasons, I've not seen that before, but that could be, there could be other reasons. Shark could be a reason. So we would have the authority under our regulation to do it for shark. So let's talk about why the, the press release. So we had a case of necrotizing fasciitis, is the medical term for, I haven't said it yet, but for Vibrio bacteria, it's also, staff can also cause that. Generally, Vibrio is a bacteria that lives in coastal saltwater, okay? So it lives in saltwater, it's naturally occurring, it's nothing that's new, it's actually very important with our shellfish program, Vibrio control. So Vibrio is not something that just magically showed up. Now, the water's warmer, and perhaps the levels are higher, but it is not anything that is not naturally found, it lives in saltwater. There is no regulations on it, I couldn't find any regulations in the other states as well, like the three states that I looked at that I thought would be the most would be Florida, Texas, and Louisiana. They don't, there was 20 cases so far this year in Florida, 14 in Texas, and I believe five in Louisiana, but don't quote me on that. So there has been a handful of that, that does happen every year, they have basically the same things that we posted in the, in the press release and then we have on our website. Really, the issue is with wounds, especially some people that are immune compromised, and just having enough of the Vibrio to get in there, or the staff, there's, there's types of staff that also do this, so. There is no regulations, it's not part of the testing program, and even states that tend to have more of a chronic issue than we do, seem to have the same sort of system that we have, and they're testing for fecal coliform, not necessarily testing for Vibrio, so. Any questions?
Interesting to learn that. When I was a kid, my mom said, oh, you go in the ocean, it'll cure your cuts and-
Saltwater. Just, just another question, I don't know if you're prepared to answer it, but there's been a lot in the news about West Nile virus and Falmouth in particular, can you just say a few words about that?
Sure. So Cape Cod mosquito control project is what we have on the Cape, also really nice to have. They're out, they're out all year round, you'll see them in the green trucks, has anybody seen the green trucks that come out? And they'll do all kinds of work year-round to make sure that we're not having stagnant water. And they also, what they do is they essentially have sites at which they collect mosquitoes, and they test the mosquito, they check for the species, certain species are mammalian biters and others aren't, some are bird biters, we're not really worried about those. But they'll, they'll look at the different species and then test a, a sample, which has usually got somewhere between 20 and 40 mosquitoes usually in a sample, and test for triple E, E. coli, and cefalitis, and West Nile virus. Some years, we have more West Nile virus hits in the mosquitoes than usual, this year it's been four. We've had one in the end of June, I believe, end of July, and then two this past week. And what, and the ones this week were in two of the samples, and the spots that we generally get hit are here behind Town Hall off the Siders Pond, and there's another sampling site over on Woods Hole Road. And it probably has a lot to do with the migratory patterns of birds and, and different reasons why it generally comes up and down. I can tell you, triple E definitely is cyclical. It looked like, you know, we had an issue, they were about seven to 10 years apart, it seems. West Nile, we can go a year without, we can go a year with two, we can have a year with four, but the same control that you would say, just don't get bit by mosquitoes, to do the best you can. And the species that most is worrisome is the one that you could control the best as a homeowner, is by taking and dumping water from bird baths, water from, you know, I noticed the other day I left my wheelbarrow flat, and so water was in there, so dumped that. You know, I had a five-gallon bucket when I went clamming, and that had some water in it, I dumped that. So after a rainstorm, just dump, and that, that type of species, the pippins, culix pippins, is the one that we worry about the most as far as biting, biting people around their homes, so just taking care of standing water, wearing deet, just taking those controls. I mean, there haven't been any human cases in Falmouth of, of West Nile.
Mr. Brown?
It's good to know that they're ongoing with the testing, and what would it take to raise it to the level? You said four so far this year, when do you say-
Human, human transmission would definitely kick that up.
Okay, but it's not like-
So a human case.
Wouldn't be like if you saw 10 mosquitoes that tested positive, would you?
Well, the state will determine whether, what risk category we're in.
I see.
So if the state tells-
You just report it, and they tell- You just report it, and they tell you where you're at.
State's reporting it to me. Really, the Mosquito Control Project is kicking that to the state, and the state will send out a HAN alert, which is the Health and Homeland Alert Network. And that's when both of my phones, my cellphone and my house phone all go off at once, if there's a HAN emergency. So that's usually what get notified, and then we would do, you know, right now, we just need to do a press release, because there is no human. If you remember in 2018, we were on the select, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Health, because we had to do, we did some spraying regarding triple E. That was 2019, actually.
Yeah.
So, you know, that does happen. Triple E is much, you're taking it much more seriously than, say, West Nile is. But the key is, do the best you can not to get bitten by mosquitoes.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item is the report of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Thank you.
Oh, you got it in here already?
Theoretically. Well, Ms. Davidson had said that it was on here, but I don't see it.
Just grab a, does anyone have a?
This may take me a minute, so if you can get started, Catherine, if that's possible.
Sure. My name's Catherine Janson. I'm the chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Thank you, Chairman Mascali, Select Board members, and town members for inviting us to do the annual report. I will kind of summarize the first part, and then hopefully we'll get the PowerPoint back in time to look at the graphs.
Or maybe you could start with the.
Pardon me?
How's things going at the Steamship Authority, if you wanted to start with that?
That was a, one of our highlights of 2025. Sure, I'll start there. That was one of our highlights of 2025. Just in the spring of 2025, the Steamship Authority installed two bollards at the top of the bike path exit. Luckily, we have a lot of commuters who are great at communicating with us. And also luckily, I reported to Mr. Renshaw, and he and Ms. O'Keefe got working, and the next couple of days, they took them down, but they still have one bollard there. They also put in jersey barriers in the bike path exit, to quote, "protect the cyclist from exiting traffic." The problem is that it narrowed that bike path. And the other problem is that children do not look at the base of a barrier. You know, jersey barrier flares at the bottom. Children look at, you know, the wall. So it's not safe. They then widened that area, exposing sandy soil, which is also not safe. They moved bike parking to that corner of Luskaman Railroad, which is sort of like, you know, if the Bermuda Triangle was highly dangerous and in your face every day, that would be Woods Hole Bermuda Triangle. And we work with DPW and Mr. Renshaw, and our plan for Steamship Authority is to hold a public listening session. We are waiting for the new general manager to be named, which is theoretically October 1-ish, but nobody's heard any words. So, oh, thank you. That was actually really fast.
She won't get the hunger of that person.
That was good.
I'm gonna use it the next one.
Pardon me?
I'm gonna use it on the next slide.
Okay, good. So to have a listening session with the community and with the Steamship Authority and DPW and FPD, to make sure we have a comprehensive and exhaustive list of issues around specifically bike pad and the ongoing construction, which is another 18 months-ish, two years, to improve safety. But we want to wait for the new GM, and thank you, Mr. Renshaw, for that catch. Okay, let's see here. All right. All right, back to the beginning. So our vision is that Falmouth is a great place to live and to visit, because our bike and pedestrian-friendly culture and infrastructure give us calm roads, clean air, and a healthy population in a vibrant economy. And so I'd like to pause for a moment and ask you to think about bicycle, pedestrian, infrastructure in the context of ecosystem. So if you have affordable housing, what is the least expensive way to get to your job? Ride a bike, take a bus, walk, walk to the bus. If you want cleaner air, we emit less carbon dioxide, although I'm sure I'll make up for it tonight. If you want quieter streets, you get traffic off the street for short errands. So please, think of it in the context of the ecosystem of our town. Okay, so there's this great vision. How do we look compared to this vision? Well, last year, we reported that compared to other Cape towns, Falmouth had notably higher rates of bicycle and pedestrian accidents, and a share of bike and pedestrian accidents that was higher. This information was based on MassDOT data compiled by Paul Joyce from our committee. Vision Zero has been an effort this year, led by Cape Cod Commission. I was on the board of Vision Zero Advisory Board, and they created action plans for each Cape town, based on the data and also cooperation with the towns. And Vision Zero is a nationwide effort to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries. This plan was endorsed by the Cape Cod MPO mid-June. Barnstable County also adopted a recommendation for a 50% reduction in fatalities and serious crashes by 2030, and the same out-of-pattern data for Falmouth was found. So let me take a minute here. So this is all crashes from 2018 through the end of calendar 2023. And you can see that Barnstable's the highest, and we're our second. So this is every mode of transportation, car, bike, pedestrian, motorcycle. And I have a link to the Vision Zero action plan at the bottom. You can see all this stuff. Let's take a look at fatal and serious injury crashes. So now we dissected that data down, and the blue are the fatalities, and the yellow are the serious injury crashes. And you can see that we're neck and neck with Barnstable. What are the share of crashes? Well, about two-thirds are cars, and then motorcyclists and pedestrian about, excuse me, and pedestrian about equal, and about 1% cyclists. This is across the Cape. What about bicycle pedestrian share of crashes? Now we're getting closer to our heart here. You can see that we're number two after Barnstable. So pedestrians are in the green, and bicyclists are in the red. And significantly higher than many other towns. Again, we're a large town, got a lot of traffic, but still. Okay, why? Why is this? So I don't know if you can see it on the slide up there, but there is a cluster of crashes that are, the biggest cluster in our area is Davis Straits and 28 through T-Ticket. So that's true of cars, bicycles, pedestrian, everybody. Also, our traffic systems, you know, we're a small town, actually. Our traffic systems are overloaded in summer. And unfortunately, I'm sure you've all experienced this. If you've ever had to drive 28 to Hyannis, you've seen outrageous driving behavior on the two-lane portions, outrageous. Drivers, bikes, and pedestrians are routinely acting aggressively and inconsiderately. And so, does the character of our roads promote crashes? So let's look at Central Avenue, big, wide, thoroughfare. The end by the ocean, there was that fatality a couple of years ago, flashing stop sign installed, crashed the next day, where they went through the homeowner's yard, crash of the fence into the homeowner's yard. The other side of Central Avenue, and certainly you know this well, that poor house has been hit three times by cars going so fast, they don't even hit the rocks. They fly over the rocks and land in their yard. Sippuwissit would be another example of a character of a road, very narrow, very windy. Last year, we had multiple incidents of car meets tree on Sippuwissit. And then many individuals, cars, bikes, pedestrians are distracted. I'm sure you've all seen people walking and talking like this. The other day, I saw a young woman cycling in flip-flops, no helmet, and her cellphone on the road, talking on Davisville. Yeah. So it's these two things in concert with each other that I believe caused this, plus this cluster on Davis Straits and 28. What are our next steps? One of the things is to not accept that accidents will happen. The other is that we've targeted six dangerous intersections and road segments, and this is based on a conversation Mr. McConerty and I had after the Dillingham-Gifford fatality, where I was pretty much ranting that, you know, traffic advisory is an incredible group, but it handles items one by one as they're brought forward. What about an umbrella approach? So we've identified six. We will meet with DPW and work together to figure out, you know, what each site needs to make improvements and start there. Vision Zero has traditionally carried with it federal funding, and they did have a round of grants in February of this year. Theoretically, next year, if so, one of the nice things about it is you can apply townwide. So you can apply for things like flashing stop signs townwide, you know, all the kinds of infrastructure that you might like. So 2025 highlights, I don't know if I call it a highlight, but Eversource consumed about half of the fiscal year. Construction began in mid-October and it ended in mid-May. This required a lot of close attention to construction details, to partnering with the community, and with DPW, and with Eversource. There are many, many weeks of tactical problems with the detours close, the detail didn't let someone into the detour, there's a closure, there was a neighborhood that actually locked access to a road that people were using in Woods Hole to kind of navigate around. This closure helped us understand that there's a large commuting community to whom the bikeway is a lifeline service. I had one of the commuters tell me a story that he is a scientist in Woods Hole. His wife works in Sandwich. They have two children, they have one car, and he commutes every single day on the Shining Sea Bikeway, rain, wind, snow, you name it. But this is how they make ends meet, because they only have to have one car. To help you size this, in January, the bikeway saw over 5,500 trips. That's 5,500 trips with lousy weather and a mile-long detour. For those who are new on the Select Board, we typically see about 350,000 trips a year on the bikeway. I want to shout out to the DPW, especially Mr. Peter McConerty and Mr. Jim Grady, for the constant communication, and for making a difficult six months go much better than expected. Another achievement in 2025 is that safety zones at the beaches were implemented. This project began in fiscal 2024. Bike Pad Committee was a participant, an active member with the community. It was actually two gentlemen from Quisit that kicked off the initiative, and those were implemented. So one of the things I've heard often is, well, but if you say 20, they go 25. If you say 30, they go 35. What's the difference between 20 and 30? It's a significant difference. If you are hit by a car and they are driving 20 miles an hour, you have a 5% probability that you will die. At 30 miles an hour, that's 45%. At 40 miles an hour, that's 85%. And by the way, these are federal government highway data. It's even worse if you were to strip out pickup trucks, big SUVs, et cetera. We have a pickup truck as our utility vehicle. But they hit people in the chest and head, not in the legs and hips. So the fatality rate is higher. That's why the speed limit's important. There's another reason for lower speed limits, and that is that the field of vision of the driver narrows the faster they're going. So at 20 miles an hour, you've got a nice full curb-to-curb field division. At 30, it narrows. At 40, it narrows way more to the middle. And to those that are doing, you know, 60 and 70 on 151, I'm sure it's, you know, they're not ever going to see someone crossing their path. So that's why the lower speed limits are important. I'm sure you've probably gotten some complaints from folks about, you know, the safety zones at the beaches. My observation is kind of, because we drive on surf drive a lot, I'd rather drive there than on 28 in the summer. My personal observation is about 50% compliance. Another, so we started with the Steamship Authority terminal area, and I told you about this, and I want to thank Mr. Renshaw and Mr. McConerty for the support of pedestrian and cyclist safety here. By the way, you know, not to be nudgy, but if you look at the photo, that's the two bollards they put in. You'll notice there's a utility pole. There's no car that's going to go down that exit. There's a utility pole there. It's crazy.
And a fence.
And, yeah, and a fence, yeah.
Was there any explanation, and what was the idea with that?
Cyclist and pedestrian safety. Unfortunately, what has happened is that most.
Prevent safety?
Yeah. I didn't read that carefully enough, you know. Unfortunately, what's happened is most are exiting out the car exit now, because, you know, we've got sand on one side. They are supposed to widen it, and it hasn't happened yet. They got sand on one side, the jersey barrier's on the other. So a lot of people are just exiting out the car exit, which is not safe, of course. One of our long-term pieces of work is to establish an east-west connection, a multi-use path for residents of Falmouth to go east-west. Two-thirds of our town lives in East Falmouth. As an East Falmouth resident, I can't tell you how many people yell at me to get on the bike path, and I yelled back, "It's nine miles that way!" So Brick Hill Road from Gifford to 28A is in our early sites. We work cooperatively and collaboratively with DPW on this project. In fact, we first went to Jim McGlothlin and said, "We want to do an east-west connector where?" And Brick Hill. One of the really compelling reasons for a multi-use path on Brick Hill is we've got Falmouth High School. Their track team doesn't have any place to run cross-country team, except, you know, around the track and a little bit of forest that's there, the YMCA. And eventually, this would connect to the Shining Sea Bikeway across 28A. It would be a huge benefit to our town resident and visitors. Our next steps here is we are going to apply for a Safe Roots to School grant in October for preliminary design, of course, collaboratively with DPW and with Falmouth High School. It'll be a long project, but a very worthwhile one. And hopefully, I'll see you September 8th to get your permission to apply. We did a bunch of community events this year. We held a grand reopening of the bikeway that involved a bike ride, a walk, and an event at the Depot Bus Station. Thank you, EDIC. They're awesome, really helpful. We held a bike rodeo for school kids at Mullin Hall in late May. We gave them bike helmets and lights. Thank you to Friends of Falmouth Bikeways. And had Mass Bike providing instruction to the children. Despite the disgruntled look on the young man's face, he was actually happy to have a helmet. Friday of last week, we went to the back-to-school bash at the recreation center. I have to tell you guys, we gave away 35 helmets and 50 sets of lights in about 45 minutes flat. It was unbelievable. And we now have a list of people who wanted to get it. And there's a need, there's a real need there. So we plan to go back next year in bigger force with more stuff. And again, thank you, Friends of Falmouth Bikeways. Okay, what's next? Our near-term focus is improvements to bicycle and pedestrian safety in the SSA terminal area and nearby streets. I've said this before, but we've just been lucky, honestly. We went down there to pick up my son and his girlfriend on a ferry, and we parked all the way down Water Street Way at the end, and walked up. And I stood there with a pastry from Maison de La, and it is still insanity and chaos down there. It's crazy. So that's really the near-term focus. It's an accident waiting to happen. We're going to review our goals at our September meeting, and then, as we did last year, hold a strategic planning session with Falmouth DPW in October. And this helps us align our goals and continue to work together going forward. We're going to continue to partner with the community, has been a theme for the past couple of years, to help improve safety. Sometimes this takes the shape of tactical local improvement. So the Minot Street sidewalk, we had a small part in that, in that I got Cape Cod Commission to send interns and manually count pedestrians and cyclists who are going down Minot. And that proved the point. Yeah, there's really a need. Sometimes it's more townwide, like the safety zones, but it's important to align with the community and make sure that we're moving together forward. How can the Select Board help? Continue to work with our community and the SSA, and Mr. Renshaw and Mr. McConerty, to make the terminal area safe for walkers and bike riders. Okay, this next one, Mr. McConerty does not know I put this in here. He didn't ask me. He didn't tell me. I didn't tell him. He didn't ask me, he didn't tell me, I didn't tell him. But I have a long background in corporate strategy, and when I look at DPW, I feel like it's like an emergency room doing triage. And of course, there are the long-term projects, but, but, when you have the water main break and you have the giant pothole appear after the rains, and you have the beach disappear, and you have sand all over the place, and you've got that guy's flooding on Surf Drive, I can't argue that getting the sheroes painted on Shore Drive is a higher priority. I can't, right? But they shouldn't have to make that trade-off. So, sorry, Peter, I didn't tell you. So I would argue that if you want to build the ecosystem, you have to make some spending in areas that are not currently critical so that behavior shifts. How many more people would ride to downtown if they could do so safely on a protected bike lane? And stop the traffic from going there. Finally, almost finally, I would say the Select Board can really help shift the mindset. It's not a bunch of lycra-clad cyclists, okay? I'm a lycra-clad cyclist. But the vast majority are in the category of, "I ride my bike to work so my family can make ends meet." And shift the mindset from, "Why are they walking?", to, "I walk for my health and I walk to town for meetings." We've had some great sidewalk improvements this year, Shore Street, Old Dock Road, Minot. It's great. You can help lead this mindset change. I want to make special thanks to Mr. Bob Muscally, a great advisor, including, yeah, don't do that, KJ, Mr. McConerty and his team. Mr. Grady jumped in his truck at the crack of dawn when that road was padlocked and the commuter kind of went DEFCON 1 on me. And he, like I called him, and he jumped in his truck and went down there and figured it out. And Mr. Renshaw for the very prompt action over the two bollards that were not ADA compliant or even safe. And that's all I have for you.
Excellent.
I wonder if you could speak to the proliferation of scooters on our, on our roads. I was coming here this, this evening, and there was one right in the middle of the street, and I was going the speed limit, and he must have been going more than the speed limit because I couldn't even shorten the distance between the two of us. So maybe you could give us a-
Sure. So that's not a street legal vehicle. And there are actually two young women who I regularly see in the Hyannis Rotary on those electric scooters, and I just say, "Oh, God, protect them, please, let them get through this." We have the same problem on the bikeway. The throttle-controlled e-bikes that are easily modifiable, that are quite heavy and go very fast. We looked at banning them, but the state doesn't really provide for that. So my opinion is, they need to be off the street. It's not safe in any way, shape, or form. And it's actually not even very safe for them on the sidewalks. And they don't wear helmets. So, yeah, and same thing with the little floaty hoverboard things and, you know, the little, the, it's like a skateboard, kind of a device, those aren't safe. And then we have a couple of kids that ride dirt bikes on the bikeway. So also not allowed and not safe. So only thing I think that can be done, the law already exists, is just catch them and enforce the law. So.
I see some of them trying to ride within the, the bike lanes. Is, is that still not, still not permitted?
It's not a street legal vehicle, no. Not a street legal vehicle. I don't know about sidewalks, I know not sidewalks downtown because bicycles are also prohibited from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Oh, yes.
Any more questions, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, thank you. I, I really liked the last lines you had about shifting the mindset. I just spent a little over two weeks in Japan, and I used a car once the entire time I was there. I, I think that, I also just want to commend Town Manager and Mr. McConerty for, you mentioned Dillingham and, Dillingham and Gifford, and there's now the pedestrian stoplight in the new crosswalk there. I used it, my grandmother lives on Dillingham, I used, used it today to help bring up the water. So, and the past Select Board for the, the speed limits on the beach as well, I think that's been a good, good step as, as your things have noted. Mentioning, you mentioned how East Falmouth is, is lacking, you know, I, on the campaign trail, I went to the East Falmouth Business Owners Village Association meeting, and they said the same thing, is that moto pizza, and, and you just see people flying by. Have you guys listened to it all? What's the, because I think, I think it's great to, to start, you know, Brick Hill Road, that's fantastic, you know, we're looking to build housing kind of near there as well, and, and I think that's a great step. What about over other parts of town in East Falmouth? Have you looked more into, to recommendations of, you know, where, how can we build more sidewalks?
Sure. So our town has a complete streets plan that was developed in 2019, I think, and approved by the Select Board. And so it is quite exhaustive, and I can send you a link to it that lists the targeted areas. For the Bike-Ped Committee personally, once we feel like we've got some traction on Brick Hill, our eyes are on 151, and it would be great to connect up to Mashpee. The cost of construction is somewhat staggering for almost all of these projects. So I think that we are thinking more of, how do we get, how do we create an interconnected network of protected bike lanes so that you could reasonably, you know, maybe have a five, 10-minute ride to get to one of them?
Right.
But there, there's quite a few. I mean, look, I ride on Carriage Shop. Anytime I go to ride, I have to. My only other option is 28.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I mean to reach out to Mash Street Town Manager, you know, Rodney Collins on a number of issues, but I, I, and I wonder the cost of that extension they did there.
Twenty-three million.
Yeah, it's a big number.
It's a big number.
Well, they've thrown down the challenge for us, haven't they?
Yeah.
Well, I think over four phases, three phases, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's, it's going to be great.
And then just another one, if, if I may. Woods Hole Road, have you been a consider on, you know, I've, there's been people have, you know, emailed me about, you know, can we get bike access there? Is that something you've looked into or heard of at all?
We have not. I know that the residents had petition for a sidewalk, but we had not, simply because we were trying to target, you know, an east-west connector.
Okay.
You do have the option of Woods Hole, of the backroads, to get in as a cyclist. One of those is Sippelwissit, and, you know, dicey. Yeah.
That's the point, yeah.
Yep, Mr. Reed?
Again, Mr. Brown. Really thank you for this report. I lived in Washington DC for 12 years, and I felt safer biking there in the middle of a city than here, and it's largely due to what you said, is speed. When you have more space, you have more speed. You're restricted in cities, you're restricted in Japan. You'll see a lot more utility, but here, I'm a little worried. So anything you can do to separate bikes from cars, I think, and even bikes from pedestrians would be very good. I use an example of Burlington, Vermont, where they have the roads, but then off to the sides, you have a nice bike path, right? But it's, it comes at an expense. And to that point, our strategic plan calls for traffic and transportation planning, but nowhere in our, in our capital investment, we have limited capital devoted to these kind of things. So I challenge the Select Board and the town to really, aside from sidewalks and ADA compliance that we have in there, I would, I would encourage all of us within the town capacity to really think about a traffic advisory and a bicycle pedestrian kind of holistic look, a comprehensive look, starting with the Brick Hill Connector, and see how we can do that right to then duplicate it and further things. But I commend you for all the work that you've done, so thank you.
Thank you. It's in cooperation with DPW. And the plan for Brick Hill would be grants all the way.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Brown?
It's true that one thing the Select Board can do is fund initiatives to support your mission. And I would note that in our budget, I saw $90,000 for bikeway improvements in asphalt. So maybe that's, hopefully to take care of the bumps on the two ends. There's something.
Asphalt's really expensive. The last time that section by Auto Camp was $147,000, I think, which was actually more than our budget. But yeah, asphalt's really expensive.
Maybe they can at least grind the bumps and-
Yeah.
That's just-
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for your report.
One more question, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Have you heard any, yeah, I've received a couple emails about Shore Street. Have you heard any concerns from riders in the summer of feeling less safe there? I just, you know, I've, not necessarily the bend, but I've, I've heard from some residents of, you know, it's kind of when you get more of the down portion before you get to Main Street, of riders not feeling as, as safe. I don't know if you've had that volume.
I've not heard that. People are pretty good about riding, but it, you know, it just could be luck of the draw. I've not, not actually heard that. Is it the volume of traffic or?
It's more speed.
Speed, oh.
Speed of individual drivers on that, which then means-
Another straightaway, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just another straight, straight shot.
Yeah. Many people ride it from Clinton, you know, down.
Right.
But no, I have not heard that. And it was part of the, so interestingly, that was part of the detour during the six months the bikeway was closed. So maybe that, but that wasn't in season, that was October, May.
Right. And I think, and then, sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I think, I, I liked how you pointed out that, like, human behaviors is a huge part of this. Like, we got TikTok now, you know, people, the, the, attention span is a lot less, and it's reflected in people's behaviors, so.
Yeah.
I, I think that's very important to point out, that we could change all of our policies to be 100% perfect. You can't stop people from going on their phones.
Even Mass Dot says, quote, "Signs don't work." To improve behavior, meaning to improve behavior.
Right.
What sign worked? Do you guys remember when they had the digital sign that said, "Use your blinker" over the highway? That actually worked.
It didn't.
But signs typically, like, slow down, school zone, 30 miles an hour, they don't work.
You know what I found interesting? When I stayed at the campground over on Thomas Lindis Road this year, the speed limit is five and a half miles per hour.
In the campground?
So that means they really mean it, because-
You gotta look. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, do you have a comment with respect to the report, ma'am?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. I've not had the pleasure-
Please, come, come to the podium, please.
I have, thank you. I'm walking that way. My name is Zepia Rose. I've not had the pleasure to see your report or to hear you. And this Net Zero thing was something new, and this is great progress. This is very good progress because it's itemized. My concern, or what I wanted to say is, what are the six specific places you're looking at? How many fatalities were there? Numbers, not chart, bar charts? And then, my biggest thing is this, yes, we can design success. We need benches that allow people to walk the less than one mile to town. Nobody's going to do it if they're out of shape or have a bad heart. There are not enough benches to indicate that walking's okay. These workers that come in, they're on these bicycles, that is the most affordable way. We need to mandate, if you're going to be on a bike and on our road, you should be learning to leave. We don't want to run you over. So these are the kind of things that I think are important, are the specifics. Yes, this is wonderful, but people are dying. Those are not numbers, those are people. So that's what I wanted to say, and you don't know me, but I've paid a long time attention to this, and this was really good.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate all of what you guys have done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And also you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McConerty? Mr. Renshaw, do you have a introduction for, for Mr. McConerty?
Mr. McConerty needs an introduction.
Needs no introduction, that's, that's for sure.
But he needs more money, apparently. Learned today.
So thank you, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. Wanted to give you an update. I'm not opening this up yet because it's just one slide, but wanted to give you an update on the John Neal Fields. The last time I think we had a public meeting was at the end of April, like two, three months ago. And the reason I remember that so clearly is that was the night that we had seven inches of rain drop on Woods Hole Road in two hours, two or three hours. But with me tonight, I got Jim Lucre with Arcadis. He's been working on the, getting us out of the ground with the environmental remediation, and also Jeremiah Pearson, because with all these improvements that we're going to be doing at the fields, Jeremiah will be picking up a lot of the additional work of the cutting up there. So wanted to give you an update of where we are. Of course, if there's any questions with the remediation, Jim Lucre can answer all the questions, but as a whole, Jim and I have been working since the beginning, since day one in this project, trying to bring this forward, meeting with Mass DEP, having the public meetings, informing the town of the reports that we've done, the environmental assessments that we've done. And also, we've been, we retain the services of Gale Associates for doing the fields. So we're basically working as a joint venture between the Town of Falmouth Gale Associates and Arcadis to bring this project to fruition. So with that, we have a concept plan that, I'm going to bring that up so it fits basically the whole site. For the site, it, it holds the three fields in their existing locations, it holds the asphalt parking lot in their existing locations, and it also includes ADA improvements, it includes, like, amphitheater seating area, terrain area where you can have seating, walking pass to get through the three fields, and greenery. We have been meeting with Mass DEP, matter of fact, last week. We had a meeting with John Hand to Hand with Mass DEP to go over our options of what might be possible for what we'd like to do. All along, we have talked about looking at the different options. This shows natural grass field, ball fields. We also looked at the option, because it is common, of using the synthetic field turf. When the conversation, we had the conversation with Mass DEP to see if, if there would be any benefits to go with a synthetic turf than a natural grass field, so you'd be actually having two barriers to, to, to separate the, the previous landfill. Mass DEP basically stated that there would be no, there's no difference in the level of fill between a natural field and a synthetic field. So for the benefit-wise, there'd be no real benefits per Mass DEP, what they would be looking at. Some of the options that we would look at, and we're talking about Mass DEP is, so, and I think we've brought it up in public meetings, our goal is to bring in fill. We have to move some of the material on the site, we're going to have to dig new foundations for light poles, we're going to have to dig new foundations for the backstops, and some other minor fill area that we're trying to, we're going to look to keep that on site. And to hold the orientation of everything as it is out there, as this shows, but to replace all three fields, to replace the press boxes on Fields 1 and 2, new scoreboards, the lighting on Field 1 will remain, we'll be adding lighting on Field 2. And then there is a slope between the parking lot and the fields, there's a sloped grass area. We're going to need to build that up, so we're going to be looking at putting a retaining wall type of material in there, to build the material up to be able to get the fill over the, over the fields, so that it would be approved through Mass DEP. So at this time, this is a concept, we are working with Gale, we're working with Arcadis, we're working with Mass DEP. This all has to go through Mass DEP also, because they have to approve how this is going to be, how this is going to be built. Our plan, we had talked, cost numbers in the past about the, to improve, to improve these fields. So there's hard costs and there's soft costs. So the, the soft costs for engineering, for permitting, for additional work we're going to do, we've already spent several hundred thousand dollars, we're probably going to spend another couple of hundred thousand dollars. And then the remainder of that budget will be for the construction of the fields. Our goal is to go through, we have these as a conceptual design, we're looking to bring this into preliminary design with Gale. So we're going to need to make a decision relatively quickly, I'd say within the next few weeks to a month, to Gale, so they can start working on a conceptual design as to if we're going to go with natural turf, or natural grass, or if we're going to go with turf. Indications at this point right now seem to, seem to be leaning towards the natural grass field for us. But that'll have to, those decisions will have to be made in, in the next several weeks. Our goal is to fit, to go through the fall doing final drawings, schematics, 50%, 75%, final construction drawings, putting the bids and specs together, and going out- final construction drawings, putting the bids and specs together, and going out, going to town meeting for the additional funding that we had, and for $3.2 million to do the construction. If that is approved through town meeting, then we'll be looking to go out to bid in early of 2026 and have construction run through 2026 and look to have the ball fields open in the, the end of 27, 2027 for, for youth baseball in the fall. So that's a synopsis of where we are at this point in time. If you have individual questions about the underground and where we are coming out of the ground with the mediation, Jim can answer those questions. But where we are right now, we're on target to go through with design and have design ready this fall.
Mr. Richards, too. Thank you for how quickly you've put this together, you know, after town meeting, voting for it, and having it ready for the next town meeting, you know, it's, it's incredible. So you just mentioned that you're leaning towards grass, great. When town meeting goes to vote for it, will it be decided of like when they vote on it, it's like that is what it will be? So like if, if you decide it's grass or synthetic, whatever, town meeting will know that when they vote for it in November?
Yeah, our preference is to, to, to keep this design going, so we'll be on track to go out in the early of 2026, is to have those decisions made, so we can relay that to Gail Associates and they can start working on.
Great.
On the design for it. So the plan is to have, which option would be in the next several weeks.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Will there be an irrigation system?
So currently, right now, there is an irrigation system out there that's on town, that's on the town water. And it, it will stay the same, it'll still be on town water. We don't have a well in the area, so it'll stay on the town water coming in off of Gifford Street.
Could we incorporate a well?
I think with the area that we have right now, with the, with the old landfill below, it would probably be.
Probably not a good idea.
It would probably be best for us just to stay on the town water for the irrigation. One of the areas that we are looking into, and as I mentioned, is that DEP would like to see, they call it a clean, clean corridor or a clean trench area, so if we're, if we're doing anything on the ground, like the irrigation, the fencing, that goes, that goes down three feet, that there is a clean corridor of clean fill that's above the landfill and above the, the, the polytexture mat that we'll be putting down. Because if we have to do work in that in the future, we do not want to be digging into the old landfill. One other item on this is that, and we had mentioned this in the past, is these fields will have an AUL on it, it's an activity use limitation. And what it basically states is, yes, they're going to be ball fields, but if we do any future work, and we're going to dig down and we're gonna be penetrating that old landfill, that we'll have to have an LSP, a work plan to be approved to be able to do that work. And I think what DEP is, they, they want the commitment from the town, that the town's just gonna upkeep the fields, like we do with our other fields, upkeep the parking lot and the fields and the work. So we won't have any problems in the future with the AUL or with the site.
I have one more question, if I could.
Sure.
Is there, do we plan to plant the grass or use sod? Have that figured out yet?
Yeah, so, that's why we bring Jeremiah in, but I think we'd be looking at bringing sod in. If you, if you do loam and seed, especially through the summertime or what have you, it picks up a lot of weeds and it just.
Can be another season missed.
If you put down a sod, sod, it's immediate, it's a median grass it takes, and then they can, you can play right on it.
Differential in price?
There is a, a cost difference in price, yeah.
Significant?
I'd say, don't quote me on it, I'd say probably a, probably 150,000 difference.
Is there, is there more, more or less maintenance on sod than planted grass?
This is a question for Jeremiah. I would say there'd be less on sod, but.
The price of sod would be overall more, but the maintenance for, for seeding would be greatly be a lot longer and, you know, more expensive.
Because that's, you know, I, I don't play baseball, but I play soccer at Trotting Park frequently. And, you know, it's, it's a massive field that you can't maintain it in the offseason, you don't even as much. And I think that it's a worthy investment to, to pursue sod over, over grass.
I think so, too.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. McConerty, next matter.
So, yeah, this was not a vote, this was just an update for the, for where we are. So, yeah, we're planning on moving forward and we'll be back to see you in, at Fall Town Meeting for the.
Okay, thank you.
In the, in the capital budget.
Do you want to stay up there and discuss the contract?
So, so, yeah, so we entered into a, a town contract with, it actually started with Republic in 2022, and then a couple of weeks after that, Republic actually sold the contract, basically, for another means, to NOSA disposal. So we ended up with NOSA disposal, and it actually worked out very well with the town.
For the folks at home, should tell them we changed the subject.
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, yeah, we're discussing the recycling and solid waste collection contract.
Oh, yes, the, the next item. So, so we've had a good relationship with NOSA disposal. They're under agreement until June 30th of 2027. But it, it, it would be good to go out for an RFP or an RFQ process. We're not required to follow the 30B process, but to see, we, we did go out to bid last time, but we went out a little late, because it, the investment that it takes for a contract to build up with trash trucks and hauling trucks, it's, it's a big lift on the contractor's side. So if we did go out to, for an RFQ or an RFP or an RFQ process, we would be looking to go out this fall and at the beginning of the year, have a review for the, for the RFPs, the RFQs. And we'll be working with town council, of course, on, on all the documentation coming back, back and forth. That's what we did last time. Last time, we did not, we only got one bidder last time, and I think it was because of the time limit, because it was a short time limit, and there's not a lot of hauling contractors out there. I think, I think at this point, we also want to be careful, because I think at this point, everyone's been hearing what's been happening over the bridge north of Boston, and that's something, we experienced a little of that down here back in 2021, 22, and it's not something we want to go into.
Do you want to talk about the uniform containers and, and that issue with respect to the contract or going forward?
So in 2021, the town went for a, a COT program, with that, we put an article in the town meeting to go for COTS. And obviously, it, it passed, and it was a success story. But what we did find out for the town, we own the COTS. So the COTS break, the wheels break, the lids break. We incorporated another duty for the Highway Department. Every Friday, they go out and replace barrels and what have you. Under the contract, what we'd be looking for, we'd like to see the, if we went for the MSW COTS, to have the contractor own them, because then the contractor would own the COTS, the contractor would replace the COTS if they get damaged or broken. So that's something, and also that the contractor, they, they include that in the price over, typically, they include that in the price over the duration of the contract, and then they amortize it back to the, back to the town. If we did that, we'd be looking at the same type of program, we'd be looking at 65 gallon trash containers. The good thing about that is, obviously, with the recycling, if the recycling does not fit in the container, it doesn't get picked up. With the trash, if the trash bags do not fit in the container, it won't get picked up. And I think that'll take care of some of our problems currently, that we have trash bags on the street and the driver has to get out and pick them up. It'd be, it'd be beneficial for the hauler that they could grab up a, if they have automation, that they could grab these COTS and just drive down the street and pick them up.
So we would be looking at that as being part of the RFP?
We would include that.
As a requirement?
Yeah. Currently, we have been working with waste connections to see if we could include those under the, this, the COTS under the contract. And, and we've been moving back and forth, it's just that the cost right now of those COTS is, is high for us to include in our, in our budget.
Brown, sure. Do you know, I, I actually thought about this, and I reached out to Alan Robinson, and I don't know if his committee has, has taken it up or talked about it, but it occurred to me that when we did get those recycling carts, and all the residents saw how the automation works, I think that inspired a lot of people to go out and buy barrels. And so now I'm wondering if maybe it might not be the best investment for us to, to encourage the operator to provide these barrels or for us to buy them, because couldn't we just say, town has a new contract with the waste operator coming up, you better go out and buy a barrel with a lid that's automatic, you know, that's compatible with the automatic lift? And just say, people, if you're not putting your barrels out correctly, your trash won't be picked up. We're providing a free service, not free, but it's part of your municipal service. I think that's a condition we could put on. The, the thing I'm thinking of is, if we spend a couple million dollars on trash barrels, and then we tell everyone, you gotta use these barrels, and they just went out and spent 70 bucks on one that would probably do the job, we're probably gonna get some pushback, because it seems like a lot of people have already bought them.
So one item is to, and it's outside of this discussion here, but to, to, we did a regulation with the, our recycling regulation, we did a recycling bylaw.
Yeah.
You do, if, if there is a possibility to do something within a solid waste bylaw, that no trash bags on the ground, it has to be in a container. What happens with the contractor is, the soft containers, when you go and buy the soft barrels, their arms crush the barrel. So me personally, I went over to Eastman, Eastman sells them, they buy the 45 or the 60, and it's the composite barrels that are the hard plastic. So when they pick them up, it picks it up and puts it into, and they put it back on the, on the roadway. So it's, that is another option, it's outside this discussion, discussion, but, yeah, it could be something we could work on. It would be a, a bylaw or a regulation or something, with through the town.
Yeah, maybe that's something we should try to work on.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to also mention that we, recently, we just signed up, Mass DEP has a, a new solid waste contracts for, for cities and towns, municipalities that are gonna be going out. They have worked, seven or eight workshops over a duration of weeks that we had signed up on, myself, town manager, and assistant town manager. So that's gonna be happening in September, October. So we, we sent the state our existing contract, and then I think what they do is they get other municipalities together, and it's a workshop between all municipalities to come up with the best contract.
Statewide standard, kind of.
More of a standardized, right, correct.
I think Alan wanted to say.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Robinson?
Alan Robinson, Chair of the Solid Waste Advisor Committee. A number of things that you've talked about, Doug, you brought up the, the carts, a number of people having compliant carts. We've actually, we, together with Mary Reither at the Department of Public Works, have been surveying, driving down, driving down Falmouth Roads on, on Trash Collection Day. And we've actually been gathering, we've, we've surveyed over 500 residences and have data on the number, the percentage of homes that have compliant carts. A lot of people have carts with wheels, but compliant carts that, that, as Peter was describing, that are rigid plastic, that the trucks can lift without crushing them. We've got numbers on those, as well as the non-compliant and the people with barrels. So the data is readily available to base things, as Peter said, the need for having a regulation in terms of no, no bags on the side, the 64 gallons. We've also been surveying how many gallons worth of containers and bags people have on trash day. And those data can support developing sound regulations. There certainly will be folks, one way or another, that will have, have a complaint about one thing, or concerned about one thing. But having a, you know, a plan that's discussed, that's, that's communicated well in advance to the community before the barrels, the, the standardized carts come out, is really, really important. And as we mentioned, I guess about a month or so ago, when we made our presentation, our committee's presentation, getting the message out to the community, engaging the community into discussion in advance of getting the carts out will be important. There were challenges with the, with the recycling carts. DPW handled them really, really well. And the town, you know, the folks really received that well. Trash is even more challenging than recycling in terms of carts and so forth. And so really putting some thought into how we do it. And just one last thing. I know there's been some discussions and negotiations about possibly extending the contract, the current contract, and there's some advantages to that in terms of making a agreement. Now, going at the bid, if there is only one bidder, again, even with more advanced time, we certainly support getting, if it's gonna be bid, to get the bids, bid request out early. But there may be advantages, in terms of financial advantages, of signing a long-term contract now, that would be advantageous to getting a good price for the town. So a lot of, I think, rather than jumping one way or another, you can certainly start planning for a bit, but look to see if there's a way to negotiate good conditions with the current contractor.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, yes.
Question. I don't know who it's appropriate for, but with the uniform carts, what are we solving for? Because are we solving for problematic residents, and that's a few, or is it a large? Is it aesthetics? Is it speed? Are we paying the picket, pick up people by time or by house? Or is it, you know, cost? Because getting out costs more, you know, in a contract than putting up. So I'm just wondering what we're, I'm all for it, because I like it, I like watching it, but the question is, like, what are we solving for with the uniformity?
So there'd be multiple things. So would be, obviously, that would be beneficial to the contractor, because they'd be doing automation. They wouldn't be going out to, if you see two trucks go down the street, one's automation and the other one's not, you, the one that's not, you'll have two, two people in the truck, a guy jumping in and out of the truck, picking up the barrels. So that obviously takes longer. There's also jumping in and out of the truck and picking up the barrels, there could be room for injury, you know? So the contractor would rather just, right? So a new truck costs half a million dollars for one truck, and they last seven to 10 years. So if the contractor is going to go that route, they're gonna want to know that the town's going automated, because they're not gonna wanna, if they're gonna go automated or they're not gonna go automated, the, the industry standard is going automated. But if they're gonna be spending, they typically go out and buy, we have, in the wintertime, eight trucks running, and the summer, in summertime, we have 10 trucks running. So 10 times a half a million dollars is like, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of money for that. For the town, one of the goals for me is to get the bags off the ground. If they have the bags on the ground, you get rodents, you get vectors. And sometimes what happens is residents in town, or if they have a, if they're down on a weekend and their trash day is on a Wednesday, they, Sunday night, they drop that on the grass and then they're gone, and by Wednesday, it's, it's either all over the street or what have you. So for the town, it'd be beneficial to get it off the ground. And also for the town, just branding, is we have the, the recycling with the seals on it right now for recycling. So everyone has the blue recycled bins. For us, it would be the blue solid waste bins with a different color.
Cool, great.
Color on it. And then the contractor knows, if, if it's a town that has the seal on it, they know that it's, it's a town seal. The other route would be, you know, there's, people have barrels, but what kind of condition are they are in? And if the contractor's gonna be responsible to fix that, at least if they get a new barrel, they know they're starting from zero, and they're not starting at a 50% barrel, you know?
If they're crappy barrels, just throw them in.
Yeah, and then, and then what happens is the people complain, and then the contractor or the town has to go out and buy a new, new barrel.
I appreciate the answers.
And ultimately, the, the, there would be a savings to the town with respect to, to the, the cost with the, with the provider?
Yeah, so what happens is, the contract actually has a, a weight for, for barrels, if you have a barrel, for, for weight limit. We typically give out one barrel. Sometimes you drive down the street, you see four barrels. And a lot of it's not recycling, that should be in recycling, they're putting it in the trash, so you'll save on costs for the solid waste going to the bone.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That the goal is, is to, you know, and then to also have a large recycling and a small trash, it's, it shows the relativity, we're, we're trying to recycle more than, than trash, municipal household waste.
Thanks for giving us.
That's something we'll be working on over the next several months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Email comments. My name's Cynthia Rose again. I want to say that the new barrels, fantastic idea, because what we're trying to avoid is litter, and litter was a huge problem before these new barrels showed up. What Jack said, which crossed with me, is this is your great revenue opportunity. Everybody pays for a dumpster or somebody to come pick up their trash. We pay for. We pay for fishing licenses and dog licenses and boat licenses. Why can't we all pay $25 for our new trash can? I'll say, I was not a fan of the new trash cans. I wasn't. And I am now a big fan of the new trash cans.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. We're gonna move on to discuss and consider a vote to approve a request from Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod for a waiver of the application and permit fees for four affordable homes at 805 Gifford Street Extension and 14 affordable homes at 48 Benjamin Nye's Lane.
Move approval.
Mr. Renshaw.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna ask Mr. Johnson-Staub to lead the presentation and then.
Thank you.
Turn it over to.
So as most of you, I think, are aware, the town has, um, you know, pretty well-established precedent of waiving, uh, application and permit fees for affordable housing projects. There is specific language in your fee waiver policy that addresses, um, the type of affordable housing projects that qualify. So if it's a for-profit developer and they're only doing 25% required affordable, that project would not be eligible for a waiver of fees. But when 100% of the units are affordable, the town, uh, has a policy and a well-established precedent to waive those fees. So the recommendation from staff here is to follow that policy and waive the, um, building, sorry, to waive the permit and application fees for these 18 affordable units as requested by Habitat for Humanity.
There is a question about the installa-, water meter installation fees.
Right. So that would not include, there's language in the policy about if there is a direct cost to the town, that those fees would not be waived. And the only fee that, um, that really comes up in that regard is related to water service connections and water meters. So there are direct costs, the town purchases a water meter, um, and so there's a fee to, um, for the, the purchase of that water meter.
We would not be waiving those fees at this point.
Correct. Correct. So permit, uh, application and permit fees, not water service or water meter fees.
Well, you've been waiting a long time, so tell us.
Well, you just said my.
We know who you are, but tell us anyway.
I'm Noreen Brown, Director of Land Acquisition for Cape Cod Habitat for Humanity. And we are here to see if there is a chance to waive the fees under section one of the, um, the waiver fee policy. And the other fee we would pick up is any kind of peer review or consultant fees. Those would be our costs, anything that doesn't really come out of pocket from the town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion to vote to approve the waiver of all permit application fees associated with this affordable housing construction. Uh, the waiver would not include water services and installation fees.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for hanging out.
Okay. Are we ready to review and consider a vote to approve the minutes of the meetings, July 28th, 2025, which we took off, uh, the, uh, the agenda last time and our August 11th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion and a second?
And a third.
Sorry. And a third. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Town managers supplemental report.
Just a quick update, uh, project update. Uh, I'm gonna go out on a limb and commit to, uh, by September 29th, uh, select board meeting, uh, we're, Peter and I are in the process of finalizing that strategic plan, performance measurement, capital project tracker, um, platform that we've been working on for a year and a half. Um, it's been a challenge, to say the least. Um, departments are, have been tasked with having all of their metrics in the system by the end of this week, actually, which is gonna give us about a month to kinda review everything and make sure it's fine-tuned and ready to go. Um, so I wanna do a demo, uh, my goal, on September 29th. So look for that. Should be just after, unfortunately, the, uh, the workshop that we're planning. But, uh, we're gonna have a, I think we're gonna have a really excellent management tool going forward.
Hey. Awesome. Thank you.
How are we gonna do that together? So the week before, like, could we really mess you up?
I don't.
Purposely thinking, but.
Well, this platform is meant to, uh, to grow. Uh, so we're starting it out relatively small in terms of the numbers of metrics. I think, you know, we've discussed this and I don't wanna go too far down this rabbit hole, but we've discussed, um, a lot about the need to take a hard look at the goals and objectives within the seven core areas of the plan. Um, so this, I, I think to answer your question, it's gonna help us in the long run. So we'll be able to tweak it and add additional elements to the, to the platform.
I really like the idea because it's what I was speaking about before and I'm glad you're working on this, which is just tying it, all the pieces together because it comes down to dollars and cents at the end of it, but it's metrics.
Okay. Any select board reports?
The one thing, uh, that I did before I left, uh, for Japan was I, uh, attended, uh, EOHLC secretary, uh, at Augustus was in Plymouth. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend his tour of the Falmouth Housing Authority. Uh, but he had encouraged that, uh, the town work closer with the housing authority. Uh, in his view, that there was a lot of, and I share this, there's a lot of potential for redevelopment, um, in certain, you know, particularly Scranton Ave is, is, I, not optimized for the amount of space they have. Um, and to the extent that the town and the select board can get involved, he, he recommended we do. And I.
I know that's, uh, been a matter that some members of the Falmouth Housing Authority have been pushing for the redevelopment.
Some former, former members.
Of that, and former members of, of, of that property. And I think it is, uh, certainly something in, in, in keeping with the governor's, uh, you know, proposals, I think it's something that, uh, the Falmouth Housing Authority should be looking at. So. Thank you.
To whatever extent we can.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've just, uh, mentioned again about the, uh, short-term rental committee. We met, uh, last week and was a pretty interesting exchange of ideas and thoughts. We agreed to keep the base of the, uh, short-term rental bylaw that we have in place at, uh, Town Council O'Keefe did some dirty of the work on. And so what we, uh, have agreed on is we're gonna just add some definitions and some, uh, other language that we've been looking at other towns' bylaws and I don't think there's really anything that's gonna come out of ours, but just that we'll probably wanna add to it. And, uh, it was really nice of Leslie Sandberg to come down from Provincetown on a rainy night and tell us how her program or their town's program is working. And, uh, it was very informative and we're gonna meet again on the 20th of next month to, uh, take it up again.
Hopefully not during our strategic working.
Not the 20th, let's see, uh, 10th of next week, uh, next month. September 10th. Yeah, so we're still on for our, uh, strategic planning on September 20th, correct?
We're, we're looking at the dates right now.
The following.
I think it's the following week.
Oh, is it?
I didn't wanna throw a date out. We're still, we're, we actually received a proposal back from the consultant that we're looking at and, uh, we haven't finalized that date.
Okay.
But I think it's the following, I think it's the following weekend.
I had penciled in the 20th, but.
Actually work with here.
It might.
Yeah, there you go.
So you're thinking maybe this September 27th?
That's the date that's sticking in my head right now, but.
Okay. Okay. Any future agenda items and?
Uh, Saturday, the September 27th?
It will be a way at a wedding. Sorry.
But we'll work.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
You know where I stand on these things.
I have an annual meeting at 9:00 AM on the 27th for my, for work.
Dylan's.
At Summerwood Condos.
Peter and I will work with the consultant. There was a little flexibility. One, one of, one of them was avail-, it's gonna be a, a tag team approach with the consultants. One of them was available one day and one wasn't, but we'll work with the consultants.
Would we wanna consider a weekday? Is it possible for anybody else?
Um, mm, I would prefer weekends. I can probably get, I get, when do you leave for your wedding? The wedding?
Wedding's on Saturday.
Friday, so Friday. Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I can probably work out a weekday, uh, if needed. I would prefer a weekend, but if I absolutely need to, I can.
I could do a weekday as well. So if that's something that people wanna consider, just throwing it out there.
Are you, you thinking of a, of a meeting that would start on a weekday at nine o'clock in the morning or in the afternoon, evening?
Be flexible, maybe an afternoon into early evening or who knows, whatever you guys wanna come up with.
Had on you.
Just can't do the Saturday, the 27th.
We gotta try and.
Consultant can do the 20th.
Stay with the, try and stay with the 20th if we can.
Peter's saying it may still be on the table. That was the date that we talked about.
Let's try and push that if we can.
Yeah, that, that works for me.
I think that's the date most of us were, were looking at. So, thank you. Uh, future agenda items, um, you know, Mr. Reed, thank you for your very detailed email. Uh, and I think there's a lot in there with respect to tying things together going forward. So I, I think in setting the agenda going forward, I think we're gonna try and keep those principles in, uh, you know, in mind as we set the agenda and see what we can.
Thematic approach.
Tie on some thematic approach, uh, to setting the agenda. Um, do in the future, do we wanna list some of the things that we have, you know, spoken about as future agenda items?
We can certainly do that. You know, I'll, I'll work with Diane.
Yeah, just so we can at least, you know, people can know what, what, what we're thinking of.
The only new one that I have that I can't, I might've mentioned this already, um, I probably did, uh, but I think I've heard a lot of complaints, some warranted, some not warranted, about just improving the accessibility of the website and just the way the website looks. Uh, if that's something we could have discussion about.
I thought you were gonna talk about the beaches when you started talking about accessibility.
No. Accessibility is a, it's a wide variety of things. But yeah, so that's.
We've got a lot of IT items on there.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of IT stuff.
Hopefully, one of them will fix this thing that says, "Website not trusted" when I try to use this town's Wi-Fi. I just can't use it. I just, I use cellular network instead because it pops up constantly.
And I, oh, I did get an update.
If I put this on.
Seasonal.
I tell you, that's why I use, uh, why they use paper.
Okay.
Well, that's not progress.
But it helps. It works.
Private relay unavailable. Well, town of Falmouth guest is not connected to the internet, but then it pops up and it says, "Web, this, this network not trusted." And what kinds of pop-ups that constantly come on to make it so that I just can't use it. Cannot verify server identity. This constantly pops up. So I end up just turning it off. No one can use it unless you have the, the password.
We'll have, we'll have IT looking at it. I hadn't seen that before.
I met with Dawn Lewis when she first came here and I asked her if she could fix it and she said she'll work on it, but it's like an elusive.
Mr. Chair, I have a, Ms. Chair, have a motion?
Wait.
Anyone? Anyone ready to make a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I, I thought you were gonna tell us something.
I just wanted to, to, to be clear that, that, on the website.
Yeah.
The accessibility and kind of the, or like a static look and feel, or layout of the site or more accessibility issues, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. I just think that, was it Civic Plus?
Yep.
I just don't think they do a good job compared to other platforms. So, you know, one thing I pushed for on the housing authority was them to revamp their website and they did. And I just think, you know, I've, a friend of mine is, uh, Mike Nicholson, the mayor of Gardener, and I've been talking with him about, you know, he's transitioned from the platform they use, I can't remember what it is now. I just think there's newer options that are out there, but I think we should review the cost because that was one thing I was shocked at how expensive that that is. Um, so I just would like to, to talk about that more.
I'd like to echo something that, uh, Ms. Goldstone, uh, also recommended is the use of AI in it as well, if we build that capacity, because trying to figure out how to do something as an average citizen is really tough to do. And it'd be really nice to have a, you know, almost like a, a Google search bar within our thing to say, "How do I put an addition on my house?"
That's a terrible example, but like, the how-to.
Calling Doug Brown.
Well, when you, yeah.
I've had three of those so far.
I don't want that on there, but. But like, when you order from like, uh, you know, or clothes or whatever, Amazon, that's on there.
We don't have it now, but it's, it's.
Well, we're talking about tech stuff. Just throw out one more thing I'd like to have for an agenda item at some point, or I don't know if it's for select board purview or not, but honestly, but I would love to have FCTV get access to the FiOS or the, uh, the fiber network that we have here. There's gotta be a way that they can be sequestered on, if it's for security concern or whatever reason that they've not been able to get the fiber network access. Because then we could have hybrid meetings, the way the Assembly of Delegates does. They would be able to be empowered, right now they're in a TV-based system, but if we let them into the fiber system, then we could have hybrid meetings and their, their capacity would be so much greater. They would then be an internet-based service and the, the whole production would be so much better. I don't know if anybody's thought about that or?